Alex, can we go to the full grid away from this main page?
Of course. Sorry about that, just waiting to tell everybody, kind of got in, yep, all good.
No problem. And do we have Kim, our court reporter with us? Is she ready to go?
I am here and ready.
There she is. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it. Okay, Alex, everyone in the council chambers, good to go? Say yes?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's go on the record then. All right, now is the time and place for part four of the conditional use hearing on the application filed by Churchill Creek Project for the property located at 1310 Buella Road, Pittsburgh, PA 15235. The applicant proposes to construct a distribution center at the former George Westinghouse Research and Technology Park. I know most of the folks hopefully have been on here throughout and everyone's familiar with the way that we have been going about this hearing, seems to be working pretty well under the circumstances. So, you know, what we're going to do tonight is allow the applicant to call their next witness, and then there'll be an opportunity to cross-examine by the various party objectors, including Mr. Ferguson. Do we have Mr. Ferguson here tonight? I see he's got his hand up. So, Alex, can we help Mr. Ferguson out by acknowledging him?
So, I promoted him to a panelist.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Ferguson, are you with us?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Okay, just a sort of a general ground rule, if you could just keep in mind that we do have a court reporter who's taking down all the testimony tonight. And folks have been very good about this to this point, so if you could just keep up the concept of not speaking over each other, speaking slowly and clearly when it's your turn to talk, that should allow us to do a, have a nice clean transcript when we're all said and done. So with that said, Mr. Metz, Mr. Gallagher, are you prepared to proceed?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Great, go ahead.
Great. So we'd like to call our next witness, Joe Sabato, who did our air quality study. So, Joe, if you could introduce yourself and give your credentials and then just discuss your report.
Pardon the interruption, Gavin. Don't we need the court reporter to swear in anyone that wasn't sworn in?
Mr. Castilia, you beat me to the punch. I was just unmuting myself to say just that, but thank you for the reminder. I'm not sure if Mr. Sabato was sworn, but certainly why don't we take this opportunity to swear in not just Mr. Sabato, but anyone else who may be testifying tonight. Go ahead, Kim.
Anyone that's going to speak tonight that needs sworn in, go ahead and raise your right hand. To swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. So, great. I am a senior consultant with Epsilon Associates. I have a bachelor's of science degree in meteorology from Penn State University. With that degree in meteorology came an expertise in air quality studies. In 2011, I received my master's in public health and environmental health from the Boston University. I've been doing these types of analyses, which are air quality modeling analyses and public health analyses for the better part of almost 18 years now. And that's about, oh, I'm also a certified consulting meteorologist, which is a certification for meteorologists that's very similar to professional engineers. So with that, I'd like to walk you all through a very brief presentation I have that sort of hits the high parts of the analysis we did for this project.
And just for the record, I believe the presentation that he's putting up has been identified as Exhibit 60.
And it can be found online at the borough's website. We posted it earlier this evening, so that would be Exhibit 60, and it can be found where the other documents have been stored. If anyone has a question, they can text me at 412-758-8818.
Thank you. So what we did is we prepared a comprehensive air quality modeling analysis. Really, to answer the question, will the project result in a detrimental impact from air pollution? Whenever you begin an air quality analysis, it's very standard practice, whether you're doing it for an air permit application for a much larger source, this project actually does not require an air permit from Allegheny County Health Department. For details on that, you can see Exhibit 23, where we confirm that with Allegheny County Health Department. But with any air quality modeling analysis, you prepare what's called an air dispersion modeling protocol. And really, that outlines the methodology that you're going to go about determining the air emission rates, the air emission pollutants that you're going to be looking at, the background air quality. So we prepared that air modeling protocol and provided it to the borough, and that protocol was reviewed and commented on by TRC, which is a well-known environmental consulting firm that was hired by the borough. So as part of that air modeling protocol, you identify the emissions of the criteria pollutants as well as air toxics from all project-generated traffic, including diesel trucks. And these are both the trucks on roadways that are surrounding the site, as well as the stationary sources. These are things providing heat to the building as well as an emergency engine. And all of those emissions are then put into a dispersion model. And this dispersion model was developed by the Environmental Protection Agency, and it's called AIRMOD. It's the, what's called the preferred model for doing these kind of analyses. It's what you would do for really almost any analysis these days as part of anything that would require a permit. As part of determining the emissions, there's a series of steps that you have to take. The first step is really to determine using what the emissions are from the stationary sources. So those stationary sources are assessed using what's called engineering factors, which are developed by the EPA, which help you determine what the emission rate is. This is like grams per second emission rate estimations. For mobile sources, it's a little bit more involved. What we do is we take, let's see, we take the traffic impact analysis to take the number of vehicles traveling to and from the project. And specifically, we're concerned with what roads are they taking and what is the vehicles traveling to and from the site? Are they employee vehicles or are they diesel trucks? What are the delay times at the different intersections that are near the project site? What are the speeds of the roads that they're traveling on the project site? What is the vehicle mix like? So for example, are we talking about cars all that were from the 1980s? Or do we have much newer cars for this analysis? Okay. And lastly, we account for roadway dust because as cars travel over the road, they stir up dust, and that also contributes to emissions that go into the AIRMOD dispersion model. So to do this, what we do is we use the traffic impact analysis that was prepared by Langdon. We use the vehicle mix input obtained from the Allegheny County Health Department that tells us how old the vehicles are, what types of maintenance the vehicles are subject to, because that is also something that can impact the magnitude of the air emissions. And we put it into an EPA model called the Motor Vehicle Emissions Simulator, or MOVES. This, we use MOVES 3, which is the latest version of the air dispersion modeling. And like I said, that MOVES 3 is able to factor in the length of the roadways, the vehicle mix, idling, both idling onsite that would be occurring in parking areas onsite, as well as idling that would occur as at different delays associated with the intersections surrounding the project, as well as the roadway dust. And what that model does is it then generates emission estimates that feed into our model. Okay? The AIR dispersion model, AIRMOD, ultimately uses those emission parameters along with terrain information, along with the buildings onsite, because the buildings onsite have the ability to influence what's called downwash, which can also impact air pollutant concentrations. And it combines all those with five years of hourly meteorological data to generate concentration estimates at receptors. A receptor is just a fancy name for a location of interest in the model. Okay? For this analysis, we modeled concentrations over a six kilometer by six kilometer area, and we put receptors along the site boundary as well as nearby homes and other sensitive receptor locations such as daycares and schools. So as I mentioned before, our analysis focused on the criteria air pollutants and nine air toxics typically associated with mobile sources. In our analysis, we also do account for existing air quality, so that what are people breathing right now? Because what we're ultimately going to be doing is taking that value and adding it to the project's contribution to document that with the project included, that we're not going to exceed any health-based or any levels of concern. For air toxics, what we do is we do a direct comparison using reference concentrations. Reference concentrations are specifically used for non-carcinogenic air toxics. For air toxics that carry a cancer risk, we use something called inhalation unit risk, and I'll explain what both of those are a little bit later. So as you can imagine, we've been at this for a little while. We initially submitted the modeling protocol back in December of 2020. TRC provided comments on the modeling protocol in January of 2021. We prepared the air modeling report back in March of 2021. We received comments from TRC on that report in April. A little bit later in April, we prepared response to comments back, and then we just recently revised our report to reflect the latest traffic study of June 2021. So what you see on the screen right here are, is really how the model is set up within the AIRMOD framework. You'll see these gridded receptors, these gridded points here, and that is the six kilometer by six kilometer grid where we're asking the model to predict concentrations at. You'll notice areas where we have kind of clusters of green patches. And though that is where we're predicting concentrations of various homes, you'll notice the blue line sort of extending out from the center of the site. That is the roadways associated with the traffic impact studies. Those are all project-related sources that we've included in our modeling. Faintly, in the center here, you'll see this big square that represents the employee parking area where we're concerned with idling emissions. There's much smaller squares on the eastern portion of the site and the southern portion of the site that represent the truck area, the truck areas. Lastly, you'll notice these sort of red crosses that appear on the top of the building. Those reflect the natural gas-fired heating equipment that's on the building, used to heat the building. And the emergency engine where this latest design is now down to a single megawatt natural gas-fired emergency engine that's on the western portion, the western edge of the building. This is just extending out to see the extent of how far that six kilometer by six kilometer receptor grid goes. And this is just zoomed in to get a better look at it. So ultimately, at each of those locations that I just showed, we will generate a concentration estimate. And that concentration estimate will be from both the mobile and stationary sources of the project. So what do we compare those to? For criteria air pollutants, these are things like carbon monoxide fine particulate, which is also denoted as PM 2.5, that stands for 2.5 microns or smaller. We also look at coarser particulate, which is PM 10, which again is PM particulate matter that's 10 microns or smaller. We look at nitrogen dioxides as well as sulfur dioxide. And those pollutants are criteria air pollutants. So the Environmental Protection Agency, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and the Allegheny County Health Department have all adopted the National Ambient Air Quality Standards as being protective of people with pre-existing disease. These are people that might have asthma. These are people also that are sensitive subpopulations like children or older adults. And these NACS, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, are established to be both protective of short-term and long-term health effects. Okay, so we have varying averaging times for these standards. For air toxics, the approach is a little bit different. We use two different types of concentrations depending upon whether the air toxic is a carcinogen or if it is not a carcinogen. For air toxics that do not have carcinogenic effects, we use what's called the reference concentration. And the reference concentration really represents what's considered to be an acceptable level of air pollution for continuous exposure to the human population. And really, there are steps taken to make this a very protective value. It's not derived by me, it's derived by the Environmental Protection Agency and other agencies. In our case, we use a lot of, we had the input from TRC in helping to select some of these values, but mostly their values from the Environmental Protection Agency. The inhalation unit risk is what we use to assess carcinogenic effects. And really, that's the estimate of what the cancer risk exposure would be from just being exposed to one microgram per meter cubed over the course of your lifetime. And so what we do with that result is we multiply it by an estimate of long-time exposure to estimate the lifetime cancer risk. Okay? And in both of these cases, for the air toxics, the Allegheny County Health Department has established a mechanism by which we look at the simultaneous exposure of several air toxics at the same time. And the Allegheny County Health Department has established what they consider an acceptable level of exposure by which below that impacts would be seen as de minimis. So I spoke about the background monitor locations. We use two different air monitoring locations for this project. The first is what's called the Parkway East Monitor that is located almost due west of the site, about 0.1 miles from the site. Some of you may have seen this air monitoring site. It's located literally adjacent to 376. It's considered what's called a near roadway monitor. This particular monitor site measures the background air quality from three, for three different air pollutants. Carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, and fine particulate or PM 2.5. Southwest of our site, three miles away in North Braddock, there is the North Braddock Monitor. That monitor measures PM 10 as well as SO2. SO2 is sulfur dioxide. Again, PM 10 is the coarser particulate. It's particulate matter, 10 microns or less. That monitor happens to be pretty close to the, let's see, that monitor happens to be very close to a source of sulfur dioxide. And that source of sulfur dioxide is one of the US Steel facilities. So you'll see that in that location, the sulfur dioxide is actually pretty, pretty high. So between both of these monitoring stations, we believe these to be, you know, representative or on the higher end of what the existing air quality is in the region. So now that we have our model run with all the inputs and the emissions, we have some results. And so these are the key criteria pollutant modeling results that combine both the mobile and stationary sources from the site. So on the far left-hand side of your screen are the different pollutants that we examined as part of the study. Immediately next to that is the averaging time, and you can see in some cases, the averaging time is an hour. In other cases, we're looking at a full year. In some of the meetings I've attended, I've heard people assert that we have not looked at fine particulate on a 24-hour basis. We absolutely did. That is a, so you can see PM 2.5, 24 hours, what the impacts are. So the next column over, maximum modeled concentration, this is the predicted concentration from AIRMOD at the peak impacted location, which means, so for SO2, one hour standard, our modeled impact is 0.44 micrograms per meter cubed. You'll see the background concentration, which is the immediate column next to it, is 165.9 micrograms per meter cubed. As I mentioned, I said that it was located next to a large source of SO2. It is indeed a large source of SO2. What we do is we take the maximum modeled concentration, and we add to that the background concentration to get a total concentration of 166.4. The National Ambient Air Quality Standard for SO2 is 196. So what we, what we're showing now is that when you add our, our project to the existing background concentration, we are less than 196. So if you look at that final column on the right-hand side, you'll see that each of the values are less than 100. That, that means that our project isn't going to cause a violation of the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which is really the criteria that would be used in an air dispersion modeling analysis to document that the project wouldn't have a detrimental impact. For air toxics, now we're looking at the results for the non-carcinogenic health effect analysis. And you can see we have a number of different air toxics that we examined. So again, we took the maximum annual modeled concentration. And so for example, for 13 butadiene, that was 8.5 times 10 to the negative four. The reference concentration, which is the value that comes from the Environmental Protection Agency, is two. So we simply divide the maximum annual modeled concentration by the reference concentration to generate a hazard quotient of 4.25 times 10 to the negative four. Okay? So we do that same process for each of the different air toxics of concern, and we generate a number of different hazard quotients. And then what Allegheny County Health Department, you know, has as their criteria for if this was a much larger source of air pollution that required a permit, is that we would then sum each of these hazard quotients into what's called a hazard index. So in our case, when we sum that, we end up with a hazard index of 0.16. Allegheny County Health Department has established criteria saying if you're less than two, this is considered a negligible source of air pollution. We did a very similar approach for assessing carcinogenic risk. So again, we have a number of air toxics on the left-hand side. We've taken their peak annual modeled concentration. Again, this is the, the location where the, the model predicts the highest impact over the five-year period that we modeled. And so for 113 butadiene, we take that value of 8.5 times 10 to the negative four. And this time, we multiply it by the inhalation unit risk. And that generates a value of 2.55 times 10 to the negative eight. Allegheny County Health Department has also established a process by which we assess sort of the cumulative risk from all of these different air toxics. So what we've done is again, we sum each of these individual carcinogenic risks. And when we do that, we end up with a value that is 0.06 per 100,000. And what Allegheny County Health Department finds acceptable is one in 100,000. So you can see we're quite a bit lower than that. Okay. So in summary, our analysis documents that the proposed project will not result in a detrimental impact from air pollution as it's going to use clean fuels, state-of-the-art equipment. And we've done this analysis using three specific steps. One, we've assessed all the emissions from the project. And we've assembled information from a variety of different sources, both including the traffic analysis as well as engineering factors that we've used that EPA has established. And generally, this process uses what's called expected maximum operating rates to arrive at a conservative estimate. We take that, we put it into the computer air dispersion model called AIRMOD. That model generates estimates of pollutant concentrations using the stack information, terrain data, and building dimensions. We used a grid of thousands of receptor locations with more receptors clustered near the project and five years of hourly weather data to predict ambient air concentrations under a large comprehensive sample of weather conditions. And although we're not seeking a permit from Allegheny County Health Department, we followed as much as possible for this kind of an analysis, the Allegheny County Health Department and Pennsylvania DEP guidance in doing this modeling. Lastly, the standards that we compared to are compared to what EPA and the other agencies I've mentioned previously consider health-protective. Based on what EPA has provided, that these are intended to provide health protection, including protecting the health of sensitive subpopulations such as asthmatics, children, and the elderly. Again, the project pollutant concentrations are shown to comply both with the applicable national and Pennsylvania standards. Therefore, in our, our professional opinion, we conclude that the proposed project as designed will not cause a detrimental impact from air pollution in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabato. Mr. Rob, we have nothing further for Mr. Sabato at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Mr. Ferguson, are you ready for cross-examination?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Mr. Sabato, have, do you know whether Epsilon, generally, or you in particular, have performed air quality analyses for other Amazon facilities or non-Amazon facilities which are like the proposed facility that you, for which you just did your study?
Sure. Epsilon Associates has done an air quality analysis for two other Amazon facilities that I'm aware of. It was not me that did, did the analysis for that, it was my colleague. In terms of other air quality analyses for transportation-related projects, I have been involved in many of them, ranging from things like transfer stations and solid waste facilities that would have a high transportation component to the analysis.
Okay. So do you have an opinion? Okay. So do you have an opinion or knowledge of whether there are similar Amazon or non-Amazon-like facilities uh, which are generating similar levels of truck traffic and HVAC emissions?
Uh, yes.
And, uh, for purposes of evaluating air emissions from this proposed facility, did you compare your, uh, data which you modeled against any actual Amazon or other non-Amazon-like facilities?
So in terms of the results of our analysis, we did do a comparison to one of the other Amazon facilities to document that, uh, results were similar.
And is that in your report materials that you provided to us?
No, sir.
So, but you're just telling us that it was similar?
Yes, sir. And the reason why I'm just telling you that it's similar is because there are a large number of different variables that can be impacted that, that go into potentially changing that result. So the building configuration could be different. The prevailing meteorology could be very different. The surrounding terrain could be very different. Uh, but that, you know, in terms of looking at the, the magnitude or, you know, does this make sense? That's, that's sort of the level of, of comparison that we did.
It certainly the environment in which the facility is located, as, as you said, would affect the conclusions about the emissions which are projected or which are actually generated. But, uh, I was speaking not so much of those conclusions which would be affected by the environment in which it's situated, but rather just the quantity of emissions.
Mm-hmm. Okay, sure. So, um, on that, the, the particular facilities that we're talking about are quite a bit different in size. Um, so for example, most of the facilities that I've been involved with have far more diesel traffic headed to the site than this facility. Um, therefore the emissions are typically higher because diesel is typically higher. Um, so that, that's really i- in, in that line of thinking, it, it makes it harder to draw that comparison.
Understood. But it is your experience that other Amazon, I think, i- if these are Amazon facilities, uh, from whi- whi- which you could consider comparing that the other facilities that you mentioned actually have higher volumes of traffic than what is projected here?
Uh, the Amazon facility, I can't say for certain. As I said, I did not, uh, work on that one directly, but yes, other facilities that I've been involved with have higher, uh, vehicular, you know, truck traffic associated with it.
And you, you mentioned some of those, but some of those are not Amazon facilities. Is that right?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. And did you become familiar with facilities which might initially be considered like facilities simply through your own work experience and being asked to work on other projects? Or are these facilities that you actually researched to see if you could identify like facilities?
No, def- I, these are facilities that I have worked on, not ones that I have researched.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Sabato. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Um, Alex, uh, this is where I always, uh, lean on you a bit to try to, uh, line up the other party objectors who have, uh, registered for that status so that they can ask questions they may have. Um, so I see, I've seen a couple of hands raised. Uh, if you wouldn't mind just, uh, introducing them in order and we'll, we'll move on down the line.
Hey, Sandy Fox, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In Epsilon's air quality modeling report dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Sapato, under intersections, it states, quote, "The maximum amount of time that Allegheny County Air Pollution Control Regulation Section two one oh five point nine two allows is twenty minutes," end quote. And that, quote, "Epsilon included twenty minutes of idle time emissions in the air modeling at each trailer loading bay per truck and any idling at intersections from the traffic study," end quote. Under property parking areas, page twenty-two or three dash eleven, the report says, quote, "It was conservatively assumed that each truck or passenger vehicle idles for approximately twenty minutes within a lot regardless of ambient temperature," end quote. My questions, are you aware that exceptions to the Allegheny County Health Department rules and regulations regarding air pollution control ordinance number one six seven eight two allow for trucks to idle for up to twenty minutes in any sixty-minute period if the outside air temperature is greater than seventy-five degrees or lower than forty degrees, but also for longer periods under certain conditions?
Yes, and that is why we used twenty minutes in our analysis is because of that, uh, the Allegheny County code differs from the Pennsylvania uh, restriction of just simply five minutes.
Mm-hmm. But it also allows for longer than twenty minutes in certain conditions. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, so the conditions that I understand to be represented are less than forty degrees Fahrenheit and greater than seventy-five degrees Fahrenheit.
Okay, there are additional conditions in which the twenty minutes, um, can be, uh, prolonged. Um, there is another exception. Are you aware that there is another exception that allows for a truck to idle if necessary to power a heater, air conditioner, or any ancillary equipment during sleeping and resting in a truck cab or asleep or birth?
Uh, I was not aware of that exception.
Okay. Are you aware that another exception is allowed for the operation of defrosters such that a truck is allowed to idle continuously if necessary?
No.
Okay. Are you aware that another exception is allowed if a vehicle situated in a queue of other vehicles must intermittently move forward to perform work or service? And when shutting the vehicle engine off would impede the progress of the queue and being practical?
Uh, that I am, yes.
Okay, so that can be, you're aware that can be longer than twenty minutes?
Yes.
Of idling, okay? How then is your estimate of twenty minutes of idling for each truck a conservative estimate if these exceptions exist?
Because the majority of the exceptions that exist center around temperature, which of, you know, the sort of the annual average temperature is right around sixty-five degrees, which is below seventy-five degrees Fahrenheit and above forty degrees Fahrenheit. So a- as I understand it, the majority of the time these tr- should not be idling.
What makes you say that the majority of the time?
Because outside of that temperature window, the trucks are not permitted to idle. That is, that is my understanding.
But as I just explained, there are other exceptions, some of which you were not aware of. So do you agree that it's possible that trucks could be idling for longer than twenty minutes for other reasons other than weather? Or temperature?
Um, but I'd have to look at the code again. I did not, I did review the code as part of that, but I did not see the first two exceptions that you indicated.
Okay. Under best management practices, you indicate, quote, "The facility is expected to enforce the PAV vehicle idling regulations." What means of enforcement do you expect will be available to ensure compliance with idling regulations?
I don't have knowledge of that.
Do you know what the penalties for idling offenses are in Allegheny County?
I do not.
Okay, the first offense is a warning. The second, um, offense is a hundred dollars. The third offense is five hundred dollars in any subsequent.
Rob, we would get, this is getting irrelevant.
I consider it very relevant in terms of idling because idling contributes to air pollution and that's what this study is about.
Ms. Ms. Fox, Ms. Fox, hold on one moment if you could. Uh, Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to overrule the, the, uh, objection, but Ms. Fox, you know, rather than reciting um, statutes and codes, I think if you, if you could focus on the, you know, the cross-examination questions, I think um, that would be helpful to get us to the.
Yes, it was important that I mention what the, what the penalties were for my follow-up question. Do you consider these penalties to be a significant deterrent, deterrent to violating idling time limits?
I, again, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Um, the air quality modeling report dated March twenty-third, twenty-one, under the section three two, one, three, labeled intersections states that, quote, "The facility will post any required signage to minimize idle time in accordance with regulations and has adequate roadway, parking areas and loading bays to avoid excessive queuing on-site," end quote. Can you clarify what is meant by, quote, "Adequate roadway," end quote?
So the, as, uh, Mr. Prisk testified to earlier, the facility is really designed to limit the amount of trucks um, time on the site, that as trucks come onto the site, they're picking up another load and moving, moving off the site. And so that is what is meant by adequate storage.
Adequate storage, not adequate roadway? Your word was roadway in your report.
Yeah, so adequate roadway, meaning that the, 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 yeah, the storage roadway, we're talking about the spaces that are available on-site for the, the trucks to load and unload that, um, yeah.
Okay, so you're not talking about roads that, uh, are, uh, coming to the site?
No.
Okay.
We're talking about the, the actual physical space on the site.
Okay. Under cross-examination, the traffic study expert, Mr. Prisk, agreed with the questioner that the average rate of trucks entering the site would be one every two minutes. He also indicated in his testimony that in his report, he estimated seven trucks would be on-site at one time. What figures did you use to calculate the number of trucks on-site and off-site for your air pollution estimates?
We use the same figures that Chris, Prisk did.
The seven trucks on-site?
Yes, yep.
There are forty-nine spots for trucks at the loading dock. How many of these spots do you predict will be used at any one time?
I don't know.
Okay. Will stationary idle reduction technology be available on-site? That is kiosks installed at parking spaces to provide power for heating, cooling appliances or any other electrical need for the driver?
I do not know.
Okay. The air quality modeling report under section three point three labeled constructions emissions states that, quote, "Construction will be temporary as construction is scheduled to take less than two years and therefore was not included in the air dispersion modeling." Attachment C includes emissions calculations that result from the use of heavy equipment that is required to perform the demolition and construction. These calculations include tailpipe emissions, paving emissions and fugitive dust. Tailpipe emissions calculations use EPA non-road standards and fuel masks, balanced calculations and conservatively assume emission rates as high as allowable, end quote. Do you agree that demolition and construction work projected to last seventeen months as indicated in an earlier draft report can still be dangerous to the environment and the health of persons living or going to school nearby?
I have no, um, information of which to base an, an opinion on that.
How do you plan to measure tailpipe emissions and fugitive dust from demolition and construction of the facility?
I don't believe they do.
They don't measure it?
Obje- objection, this is irrelevant. We're talking about the operations and the use, not demolition.
This is very relevant to air.
But it isn't.
I'm going to overrule the objection. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Fox, you can continue your question.
Thank you. How can you justify, quote, "conservatively," end quote, assuming emission rates as high as allowable when in fact the rates may be above allowable limits?
I, I don't understand your question.
Okay, uh, in the quote that I gave from the air quality modeling report in terms of construction emissions, you indicated that, um, you were conservatively assuming that emission rates would be as high as allowable in your projection.
Sure.
And I'm asking how you can assume that?
Sure, what that is assuming is that the engine is running continuously throughout the entire construction period. That it, that is the, um, lowest performing engine that's available, meaning it, it emits a lot. But that's, that's when we're talking about being conservative, those are some of the measures that we take into be conservative in that assessment.
Are you aware of the health hazards from nitrogen dioxide and particulate matter at demolition and construction sites?
In regards to what?
The demolition of the buildings and the construction of the warehouse. Are you aware of the health hazards from nitrogen dioxide and particulate matter?
So I am aware of the health hazards of particulate matter as well as the health hazards associated with nitrogen dioxide, but in terms of the context of demolishing this building, I, I don't have any knowledge of that.
Given the risk to the health of nearby residents and students in three schools across from the site, how could the addition of toxins in the air from demolition, construction and continual diesel emissions once the facility is built not contribute to air pollution?
So, uh, again, I mean, this, I've not testified that the project's not going to emit air pollution. It will, uh, the, the analysis that I did was simply documenting that the facility once up and operational will not pose a detrimental impact on air quality.
Okay. What plans are in place to monitor the air quality during demolition and construction?
That's outside of my testimony.
Will there be an alert system in place in the event emissions of dust reach a level that cannot be adequately controlled by mitigation measures so that site work ceases and additional abatement controls are provided?
I, I have no knowledge of that.
Okay. Will resident schools and students be warned in advance of the pending demolition and construction risks?
Question, to say, I mean, he's already testified that he has no knowledge of, uh, demolition and construction activities.
I'm going to sustain, Ms. Ms. Fox, I'm going to sustain that objection. I believe that is consistent with Mr. Sabato's testimony. Could you move on to your next question?
Your air quality modeling report concludes that, quote, "The proposed project will not cause or contribute to a condition of air pollution in the area." How is this possible?
So you're referencing an older version of the air, um, modeling?
This is from March.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I know. And that is, that is something that, um, TRC commented on, and I agree with TRC that the way that that is phrased makes it sound like the project's not going to emit air pollution, right? But the project will, um, and in the newer version of the report, it, it refines that. I mean, the project will emit some additional air pollution. And what the analysis is that, that we've done is that that level of air pollution that will be emitted by the project will not cause a detrimental impact to the air pollution in the area.
Okay. Are you aware of the US Environmental Protection Agency issuing a news release June tenth, twenty-twenty-one entitled EPA to reexamine health standards for harmful SOOT that previous administration left. That previous administration left unchanged.
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you tell me what you recall of that press release in terms of the message?
Sure, uh, basically, um, and this is, this is probably important to understand. Is that the Environmental Protection Agency is under a statutory obligation to review. The national ambient air quality standards on a, on a continual basis. It's basically every five years. During that last review, um. During the previous administration, the EPA has decided it's prudent for it to, to take another look. Um, as, as part of that analysis, and that's really what that news release was saying is that we should take another look.
And do you expect that the EPA will lower the level of PM? Two point five that is considered acceptable after they do their review?
Objection.
What's the basis of your objection, Mr. Gallagher?
Where he can only testify to regulations that are in place, not in something that is yet to happen.
Yeah, Ms. Fox, I think that does call for a speculation and, and, and I don't think Mr. Sabato is in a position to answer that question. Can you move on to the next question?
Okay. Are you aware, announced in the same news release, that based on the scientific evidence, the EPA? Quote, will move expeditiously.
Same objection, we move on from this line of questioning.
And Ms. Ms. Fox, um, I'm going to sustain that objection as well, and we need to deal with the standards that are in place currently that apply to this particular development.
Then my question is, if the standards were to be changed. And the level of acceptable particulate lowered. How would that impact the conclusion of your air study potentially?
That is an impossible question for me to answer. I'm sorry. You're, you're asking me to, to guess what the standard is going to be at some point in the future. As well as what, um, other changes to air quality that could happen as well. I, I just, I don't have an answer for that.
Given the body of scientific research and the EPA's current position, do you believe that an increase in the level of air pollution from this project? Would endanger the health of nearby residents and children attending schools surrounding the site?
No.
The roadway links table three, five of the air quality modeling report indicates that Churchill Road. Beulah to Holland referred to as link five will be a roadway link for traffic. It was my understanding that trucks would not be allowed to travel on Churchill Road or use the exit and entrance to the Parkway. I three seventy six from Churchill Road at Holland. Can you please clarify this point?
Sure, the, the air modeling analysis considers both. Truck traffic that is associated with the trucks traveling to and from the site as well as the passenger vehicle traffic. That is traveling for, from employees traveling to and from the site. So on those links, there would not be truck traffic that's associated with the, the deliveries. To and from the facility, but they would, they may be associated with people tr- traveling to and from the site for employment reasons.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase that because I'm not sure you, my question was clear. Will there be truck traffic according, I know you used the traffic impact study for your air pollution modeling, correct?
Correct.
So. Is there going to be truck traffic entering and exiting at Holland Road and Churchill Road?
The analysis we did is in line with the traffic impact study. So if there is not track, trucks traveling those roads. They're not in the air quality modeling study. It's, it's aligned with the, the traffic impact study.
Okay. Under national ambient air quality standards. In your section of your air quality modeling report. It states project activities will not emit ozone directly. Ozone forms regionally in atmospheric reactions as the project will not be a major source. Of ozone precursors, no significant contribution to secondary ozone formation is expected. And the modeling analysis will focus on direct emissions of criteria pollutants then quote. The U.S. Environmental Protections. Agency on its website under impacts of diesel emissions states that, quote, emissions from diesel engines. Contribute to the production of ground level ozone, which damages crops, trees and other vegetation and quote. How do you justify the decision to omit measures of ozone? Given the U.S. EPA statement on their website that diesel emissions do contribute. To the production of ground level ozone.
Sure, um. Ozone is what's considered a regional pollutant, which means that diesel trucks do not directly emit ozone. What ends up happening is they emit the precursors that end up forming ozone. That form a chemical reaction within the atmosphere to then result in ozone formation. And within the air mod dispersion model, there are not the algorithms to be able to do that effectively. So that is actually something that Allegheny County Health Department undertakes on a, on a yearly basis to document. Um, that, that they're meeting the ozone standards. It's given that it's, it's sort of a regional. Pollutant of interest that, that's sort of beyond the scale of a, of a source like this being able to model it.
Last item in the April twenty first, twenty twenty one letter from Epsilon. To Langen regarding feedback from TRC. Noted that, quote, the monitoring data do not account for credible near term development in the area and quote. Epsilon response, uh, response follows. Quote, an expanded discussion on credible nearby development will be included in future revised submission. Epsilon is in the process of reviewing planning board meetings, news articles. And Allegheny County Health Department air permits to identify permitted but not yet operational projects. Within five kilometers of the project and quote. My question is what additional credible nearby development is referenced here to be included? In the air quality impact report?
Yeah, I'm just getting to it in the, in the report itself that we updated, uh, last week. So. Bear with me one moment. So in section, so that discussion, um, is in section five point six point three. Of the August second, twenty twenty one air modeling report. Uh, and it says as follows, if you want me to, to simply read it to you or if you want to, to look at it, um.
You can read it, that's fine, thank you.
Sure, during the review of the air modeling protocol, TRC asked for a qualitative and or quantitative discussion. On other credible but not yet constructed development. Epsilon conducted a review of Allegheny County Health Department operating permits issued to facilities. That had not yet been constructed. A review of planning board minutes in Churchill, Forest Hills, Monroeville, Turtle Creek. Wilkinsburg, Swiss Vale, Black Ridge, Churchill Valley. East Mount, Braddock Hills and Rankin. And a review of news articles about potential development of new facilities in the area. The review of the ACHD operating permit database. Identified one facility that is under consideration. That has not yet been issued an operating permit. This facility is the Allegheny Energy Center. Located in Elizabeth Township approximately fifteen miles from the project. The peak modeled one hour NO two impact. For the Allegheny Energy Center of eighteen point six micrograms per meter cubed. Is located approximately zero point three miles from the AEC. The peak twenty four hour PM two point five impact. For the AEC of zero point nine nine four micrograms per meter cubed. Is located adjacent to the AEC fence line. Based on its location and air dispersion modeling analysis. It is anticipated that this facility, if permitted and constructed, would not materially impact. Air quality concentrations at the project site. The review of planning board minutes identified one proposed development with the potential to impact air quality in Monroeville. This is the Monroeville Mall becoming a Veterans Administration healthcare facility. The development would have five hundred parking spaces and would primarily be passenger vehicles. Traveling to and from the site. The VA center will have an emergency generator. This development is located approximately three miles from the project site. Based on the size of the proposed VA facility. And its distance from the project, it is not expected to impact air quality concentrations at the project site. The review of relevant news articles identified a few pro- proposed developments with the potential to impact air quality in the region. The first is a proposed last mile Amazon distribution center. Located at the former Eastland Mall in North Versailles, uh, Versailles, Pennsylvania. This proposed development is located approximately four miles from the project site. It is anticipated that some of the trucks that are associated with the project will travel to the proposed last mile Amazon distribution center. The current plans for this last mile site call for electric vehicles. Based on these details, it is not anticipated that the Amazon facility at the former Eastland Mall would impact concentrations at the project site. The search of news articles also identified a proposed development in Turtle Creek. Related to the recycling of slag from the Edgar Thompson facility in Braddock, Pennsylvania. This is a minor source of air pollution. That has received an installation permit from Allegheny County Health Department. It is located three miles from the project site and less than a mile from the air monitoring station in North Braddock. Air emissions from this proposed development have the possibility of impacting PM ten concentrations. Measured at the North Braddock Monitor. Based on the distance from the site and minor source status impacts to concentrations at the project site are not expected. Lastly, a review of relevant news articles finds several canceled projects and major sources of air pollution in the area. That would serve to improve air quality in the region. U.S. Steel announced cancellations of upgrades to the Edgar Thompson Works in Braddock. The Urban Plant in West Mifflin and the Clariton Coke Works. As part of these cancellations, U.S. Steel will be idling three of the oldest batteries at the Clariton Coal Works. The Clerken Coke Works facility is located approximately ten miles from the project. In addition, the Cheswick Generating Station located seven and a half miles from the project is slated to shut down in September. Based on these shutdowns and cancellations, background air quality as measured by the ambient monitors at Parkway East and North Braddock may improve.
Mr. Sabato, was that from exhibit fifty nine of your report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sabato. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ms. Fox. Alex, who's up next?
Well, for convenience sake, Sandy, thank you for going first. I'm just going to lea- read the list of names in order. So when each of those are done, I will remind you of the names. So Diana Yankis would be next, Elizabeth Casman. Followed by Peter Spurty's, Susan Starett and Craig Yankis. So Diana Yankis, would you please unmute yourself and speak? Thank you.
Unmute.
We can hear you.
Great, do you have, oh, share screen. May I sh- share screen?
All presenters may share screens.
Okay, I pushed the button. Oh, look at that. What a mess. Let me fix that. I'll, I'll, uh. You can unmute that and I'll center it a little better. Deal? Or do I just do it without your help?
I can't, uh, help you with your screen.
I know, but I thought I'd maybe shut this off for a minute. Um. There we go. Alrighty, uh. For those following, I think this is exhibit three. In the application package and it's the CS one hundred site plan. Mr. Sabato. Are you there?
I'm still here.
Oh, hi, you did a very good job. I, I, I like the way you were laying that out for us to see. And it is comforting to, um, to know that. It doesn't sound so bad. Um, I'm wondering if. The, although they're not actually on the property, but the houses that are along Greensburg Pike. Which are in the, um. And I wish I could point to it, maybe I can't. There, these houses here. And here, okay, so I'm wondering, um, let me go back a little bit. Um, you, do you know where the buffer zone is for, um, a lit- less impact? On, uh, people who are close to, um, diesels and so forth, diesel engine?
The buffer, uh, not.
There's a buffer in, in some country and some, uh. States and California it's six hundred. And a thousand is used a lot, which say that you, you don't want to be within that number of feet, um. And not be affected by diesel fuel pollution. So, although I know that the, um, applicant doesn't want to. Um, take any responsibility for the off, offsite traffic. Um, has there been any, has you, have you given any thought to these houses that are literally on the. On the same property, just they have a little red line around them, which is, which is the applicant's. Property, but these, these houses are so close.
Yeah, so, uh, I, you know, I understand and one of the things. In our analysis that we made sure to do, um, was to place points at each one of these individual homes. To make sure that we really did, um, capture impacts at, at, you know, where people live. Because we, we felt that that was important. And so the results that I just shared with you really reflect. What the maximum predicted impact is at any location. Um, including those homes. Um, and, and you saw that they were, they were below the, the levels of concern.
Right, um. If, if that's the, um, if that's the act, that little dip there, that's the, um, this here is an access road, however. So there are going to be a concentration of trucks here and they will be idling. Right, and they're allowed to idle, right, waiting for this light that they're going to put in to turn. Actually, this is a little old, isn't it? I think the new model. The, the road is a little higher up. Um, but so my question is, if, if you're sitting next to an idling one. Here or at these intersections up here. Um. Is there any, any thought of that being a little more impactful than sort of the ambient? Pollution numbers, is there any?
Based on the analysis we, we did, which does assume trucks idling there, waiting for that light to change. There should not be a concern at that location.
So, so you're saying that someone way off the map, uh, a mile or two away. Or three miles or five miles, it would be the same impact then?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm saying that the levels that we show in our air modeling study. Show them below a, a level of concern for, for health. And even when we. Assume all of those impacts are co-located and add them all up. Like Allegheny County would instruct us to do if this was a much, much larger facility, like, like a coal plant, for example. Um, that, that's the kind of analysis we did for this. You know, I, I know for you guys, this is a big source of air pollution. It, in, in my world of air pollution modeling, this is not a very large source.
I see. So, um, you put, actually put monitors on all these properties?
No, not monitors.
Oh.
These are, these are, it's an air dispersion model. Which, um, predicts concentrations at, at those properties.
Okay, and so, um, you may not be able to answer this, and I understand, but, um, there's going to be, I think, a six month. A review of data. When it's six months into the, uh, I hope, the, um. The, um, uh, when they're, when they're up and running, would that include, do you think, um. Not air modeling, but actual air quality. Sensors at, along these routes here by the, getting to the unwrapped westbound.
Yeah, I, I don't have any knowledge of that.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Gavin.
Thanks, Ms. Yankis.
Next, Elizabeth Casman, please. And then, uh, I also noted that Robin Rank, uh, has been promoted to panelist. So Robin, you would follow Craig Yankis. Thank you. And, and Diane, if you could stop sharing your screen, I can do.
Let's see.
Um, just hit stop share.
Oh, I don't see it.
So let's use your, um, mouse or your cursor to go over either the top of your screen in zoom or the bottom. And you'll see share screen either in the center or in the top.
Let's see. There comes some technical help. Here we go. I was on the wrong screen.
I'm here to help.
Sorry.
There you go.
All right.
And again, um, Elizabeth, if you want to go ahead and share a screen, you may as well, or if you'd like to turn on your camera, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay. So, um, I have to confess, I, I didn't see the, um, the June report either. I, I just didn't see it on the website. And so my questions are, are going to be, uh, about the, uh, the one right before that, the March one. It was marked final, so it was easy to pull myself. I'm trying to fix, do you see, can you read my slide, or is there something blocking it? Okay.
I, I can see your slide.
Okay, good. Okay, in the, in the air, air quality report, uh, hotspot analysis is mentioned. Uh, did Epsilon perform a particulate matter hotspot analysis for the Churchill Creek project?
No, what we did was we used that guidance in order to inform the air modeling analysis that we did.
So what kind of projects require a particulate matter hotspot analysis?
So, that is usually something that would be done by a planning agency such as like the Southeastern Planning Coalition, I believe, is, is the one that's, that's near Allegheny County.
Um. Now, I, I guess my question is a little different. The, um, the hotspot analysis guidance says the projects that require a PM 2.5 or PM 10 hotspot analysis include uh, projects affecting intersections that are at a level of service D, E, or F with a significant number of diesel vehicles or those that will change to level of service D, E, or F because of increased traffic volumes from a significant number of diesel vehicles related to the project or new highway projects that have a significant number of diesel vehicles. So, it seems like the Churchill Creek development, um, fits that definition. Uh, does it not?
Again, um, the analysis we did did not, uh, is not a hotspot analysis. It was one that we developed in terms of a modeling protocol that was reviewed by TRC. And, and so that's, you know, that's sort of the steps that we took to design the analysis that we did.
I'm just going to pursue a little bit, um. The, uh, the hotspot analysis very, very specifically requires someone to do a build scenario and a no-build scenario in order to compare the two before and after. Is there some reason why that was not included in your protocol?
The purpose of not doing the no-build scenario is that within the no-build scenario, right now, we have ambient monitors that are located adjacent to roadways that in our opinion, without the project, adequately reflected sort of the existing conditions.
Well, I, I would point out that if, if properly modeling a no-build scenario allows you to see how close your predictions are to those data. You know, it, it serves a different purpose, uh, and an important one. It, it lets you know whether or not you believe your dispersion model results and the way you set it up. So, um, also, I, I couldn't, I couldn't quite, uh, figure out, um, uh, the number of runs you did in, in moves. Uh. Could you tell me how many moves runs you did for each hour? I mean, for each year?
Uh, I don't, I don't have that information offhand.
Um. Did you, did you aggregate the, um, time of day, or did you use hourly for your moves, your moves, um, runs?
We used hourly.
Oh, good. So, um, let's see, moving on from that, which, um, so in, in your opinion, which releases more pollution, 10 trucks on a stretch of highway or 10 trucks approaching a red light, stopping, idling, and moving on when the light turns green?
I, I don't have an opinion on that. I would take both of those scenarios and run it through an air dispersion model and not have an opinion, I, I would know.
Okay, then you can't tell. So what I'm getting at is there's a truck queuing lane that's part of the new traffic plan? And, um, it exactly is a link, it should be a link that has trucks waiting to get uh, onto the parkway. And, um, a, a, um, I, I didn't expect your answer, because I thought you'd say, of course, it's the idling, because it's well-known and well-documented. Um. But, um, the, 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 um, the queuing lane, the new queuing lane, how did you represent that um, in the model?
It says a line, there's two ways that it's represented. The first is as a volume source to represent the idling emissions associated with that queuing lane. And then there is a line volume source to reflect when the traffic is moving in that lane.
Uh, does it have the same amount, same number of trucks as, as Bueller Road does?
That I, um, that I don't know. It's aligned with the transportation impact study for June, so.
I'll, I'll show a, um, well. It, it seems, um, let's see, this is old, but it, it seems like there's nothing different about Bueller Road to William Penn Highway from any other, any other, uh, link in the model.
Ms. Casman, I, I apologize for, for interrupting. Just so we're clear for the record, um, this document that you're sharing, has this been provided to, to Mr. Graziani?
What document? Oh, this is, um, this is from the air quality report.
Okay, uh, could you maybe identify by page, just so we, you know, because when we're reading a transcript later on, we're not gonna know that you're sort of flipping back and forth between pages. So just, just to help the record, if you could uh, reference the page number or some, some way that we could reference this particular page.
Um, I can't even read the caption because of the way my Zoom, I can't read the title because of the way Zoom is blocking out the top of my screen.
I'll help that. Uh, this, this one, this one is titled, uh, Vehicle Weights by Link. And below that, it says Model Emission Rates, and it says Add to Moves 3 Exhaust and Brake Tire Wear Emissions in parentheses.
Right, so that, um, I apologize. I really cannot give you the page. But, um.
That's okay. Well, I think we got enough.
Okay. Um. Anyway, so my point is that it does not look at all like, um, the queuing lane, which is a major change, is represented any differently from any other piece of, of road in the, uh, in the model. And can you tell me, is that appropriate?
You're referencing the, the March version of the report?
I haven't, I really don't know when you posted the, the June one. It's very frustrating.
I.
All I can do is the March version.
Yeah, I. In terms of the March report, that queuing lane was not proposed yet, it was still the traffic circle. So therefore, that would be why it is not in the analysis.
But it is in the new one?
That queuing lane should be in the new analysis, yes.
Okay. Um. So this is Figure Three of the, of the March report. Um. The mobile, it has, this is the mobile source locations. And I'd like to point out, um, some interesting features where vehicles can, um, enter I-376 at the westbound ramp on, uh, William Penn Highway, and, and then they disappear. Anything that goes, that enters the parkway no longer exists. And then they can enter the parkway, the other entry, exit, or ramp, rather, going east, and they also disappear. And they also magically appear on Bueller Road coming from I don't know where. Um, near the southern edge of the Westinghouse bound, property band, boundary. Um, can you explain what happens to these vehicles when they enter the parkway? And why they aren't part of the air quality emissions inventory?
Sure, if, if they're not included in the traffic impact study, if that intersection or that stretch of road is not included in the traffic impact study, it's not included in the air, air quality model and study.
Yeah, but the, um, does that make sense? They're going to be driving on these roads and emitting air pollution. Shouldn't, shouldn't they be included?
I, I just answered the question.
Right, you said why, but it doesn't, I'm asking you, does it make sense from an, from an air quality modeling point of view?
I mean, at that point, it, to me, it would, because the emissions would decrease as, as the trucks are now moving. Um, so I mean, in terms of the, the information of these locations, we don't have any information on them, so they, they can't be analyzed as part of the air quality study.
Okay, and, and we're, what's happening here in Bueller?
That, that's the, the extent of the, the traffic, the impacts from the traffic study that were studied, the intersections and the roadway lengths.
Does it mean that the trucks are going right on Bueller? Or does it mean that trucks are coming up Bueller into the?
Oh, so this, what you're showing here are not just trucks. These include both the employees traveling to and from the site as well as trucks.
Oh, okay. So, um, so you explained why Epsilon excluded the, uh, the parkway from the air quality models. He just didn't have it. The, the traffic study did it. But this is, but EPA guidance says, quote, nearby sources are individual sources that contribute PM concentrations to the project area. They include, quote, "all sources expected to cause a significant concentration gradient in the vicinity of the source or sources under consideration for emission limits." In general, nearby sources need to be included in air quality modeling only when these sources would be affected by the project. These types of nearby sources, that is, those affected by the project need to be included in air quality modeling for the P, for PM hotspot analysis because their emissions will change between the build and no-build scenarios. Now, you explained that you're not doing a hotspot analysis. But it's clear that there's gonna be a gradient of emissions. You said, you said that it won't be so bad because the parkway will be moving, but that just told me.
Can you ask a question, please?
It's told me you're not a local. Um, but there will be a gradient from the parkway. It does not that, it mean that that is a sign, that is, is um, a nearby source that should be part of the model?
Sure, I, I would argue that the parkway really is included in the modeling as it's reflected in the background air quality concentrations, given that we have the monitor that's adjacent to the parkway measuring the emissions, measuring the concentration already for NO2 and PM 2.5 and carbon monoxide.
Right, but we're going to add 300 truck trips, or is it 600 truck trips to that, very locally? So it's not in the back, it's not in the background. But I will move on, uh. Let's see. Oh, how, um, how, oh, I think this is the wrong. Okay, so how are the average speeds on local roads determined?
That, that is a factor that comes out of the moves motor, um, the move software.
Right, I asked that because it, um, it doesn't make sense to me to model Bueller Road and Holland Road identically. For example, Epsilon specified the average speed for both roads to be 35 miles per hour, though the average speed on Holland Road is more like 10 miles an hour, uh, miles per hour. So what kind of effects on the model results would this kind of error produce?
Uh, minimal. And that, that, Elizabeth, I know that you're very concerned about some of these roadways that were not included in the traffic study. In terms of our analysis, where we see our peak impacts are really due to the assumptions we make with respect to idling on the site. And because we make it, the, the assumption of that each vehicle on the site is idling for 20 minutes, we end up with a, a high, a high concentration basically right at the boundary of the site. And by high, I mean, the, the largest value is still well below the, the health standards that I presented. But that is really where we see our peak impact. So changing to add the additional trucks along that highway, it, it's not gonna change where the location of the peak impact is, because it's very consistently located and impacted by those idling emissions based on that assumption that we made in the modeling analysis.
Could you tell me where that peak impact is?
Um. Yes, it is, it is essentially just south of the, the Southern Truck Bay, almost in the direct middle of the facility.
So it's not on the rest, it's, it's on the, on the, uh, Amazon property?
It's right, right on the, the boundary of the Amazon property, yes.
Um, can you tell me which residence has the highest impact?
I, I, I can't, because our analysis focuses on the peak predicted impact for the model, not, not the peak predicted impact for that residence.
Okay. So EPA guidance says that using the moves default values to generate link activity provides the least resolution when analyzing the emission impact of a project because of default drive cycles used by the model may not accurately reflect the specific project.
Ms. Rob, objection.
I'm not, I haven't made a question yet.
Ms. Casman will be given the chance to put on her own case in chief. We just ask that we stick to relevant cross-examination. Ms. Ms. Casman, can you, uh, can, can you let us know where you're going with this particular question? I mean, you, you've been sort of reading, reading off, uh, EPA regulations for reference, so we can understand that, and I think you're, it's fair for you to ask Mr. Sabato those questions. Uh, but, you know, we just want to make sure we continue down the, the relevant path here.
Okay.
I'm gonna overrule the objection, but, but ask Mrs. Uh, Ms. Casman to go ahead and try to get to her questions.
Right, so this EPA guidance recommends replacing the default drive cycles with project-level analyses with, uh, with, for, excuse me, a little flustered now. Um, so it, it recommends, um, making, making project-specific input tables. Can you tell me for which input tables did Epsilon provide local data to replace the moves default tables?
Sure, the, the, um, only area where the default values were used were related to the fuel parameters. So that, that's just related to like the octane of gasoline, which is, is pretty standardized. The other inputs were provided by the county.
Thank you. Just a moment. Um. So in, um, oh, so it, in this table that's, that's being shown, there are only two links on the south and the east have average vehicle weights of 30 tons. And all of the other links, including those with no traffic from the warehouse, have vehicle weights of 2.12 tons, implying a mix of cars and trucks. Does this mean that all these roads are going to get some truck traffic?
No, as I mentioned, uh, I think now two times, the air quality analysis reflects not only the trucks that travel to the site, but also all the employees' vehicles that travel to and from the site. So that's, that's what you're seeing is being reflected in the vehicle weight is that the predominant number of vehicles traveling to and from the site are really from individuals working at the site.
I find that incredible, because some of the links here that will carry heavy trucks have the same vehicle weight as those that do not carry the heavy trucks. They're all 2.12. So, um, I, I guess I, I, I guess I, I don't understand your answer. Um, so, um, so this, this, um, this table um, implies that Epsilon believes that the William Penn Highway has the same traffic mix as, as Holland Road. You know, the EPA guidance says highways tend to have higher fractions of truck traffic than arterial roads. Um, can you explain why there is such a, a uniformity in the traffic mix in, in all the links of this model?
I, I believe I just did.
Oh. Um, you, you did. Um, but there, but it didn't, it wasn't logical because some of the links.
Ms. Casman, I, I apologize and I certainly want to make sure you get to your questions, but you can't argue with the witness. So when he, when he gives an answer, you have to move on to the next question. Uh, you can certainly ask a follow-up question if you like, but you can't argue with the witness.
Yeah, forgive me, I'm not used to this kind of law.
You're, you're doing fine, don't worry about it.
Okay, um. So, um, EPA guidance says that links specified for a project should include segments with similar traffic activity conditions and characteristics, and analyses can break up traffic flow on that single link to, into multiple links of varying operating modes or drive cycles that can have different emission factors depending on the relative acceleration, cruise or deceleration activity on each segment of that link. In general, a definition of a link will depend on how much the type of vehicle activity, acceleration, deceleration, cruise or idle changes over the length of a roadway. So none of the roads leading to an intersection in, in this model are divided into links for cruising and just deceleration or idling when stopped, nor do the roads leading away from an intersection have links for acceleration. Since significantly more pollution is released during the acceleration relative to cruising, why has Epsilon ignored this guidance?
Uh, I don't know what guidance you're referring to. If it's the hotspot guidance, I think I already explained, we didn't do a hotspot analysis here. What we did was we relied upon that as well as other, um, transportate, as, uh, we've relied upon that to help, um, inform the analysis that we do, but we did not do a hotspot analysis.
Um, well, moving on that, okay, um, do you know how, how long it takes to unload a truck at the warehouse?
No.
That was not part of the, um, traffic report?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you know if engines are turned off during unloading?
But again, I, I think other people have spoken to this, that the, the intent is to limit idling on the site. You know, certainly there are conditions under which Allegheny County law allows, um, idling. And that, that's really what our analysis was reflective of is that, you know, there are some situations where idling is allowed by law. But my understanding is that the applicant is trying their best to limit the amount of idling that will happen at the site.
So, um, does, does, did you get information on how long each truck can stay on the site or on average, how long they stay on the site?
Uh, I, I don't have personal knowledge. All I know is that, uh, what Chris Prisk testified to, which is that as trucks arrive to the site, they drop their load and they pick up another load and, and leave the site.
Isn't that relevant to, um, modeling? The emissions is knowing how many hours they spend on the site?
No.
Isn't, it's, it's not, it isn't grams per hour or second, grams per second in the.
So, so those area sources assume that trucks are idling within that area on, you know, continuously for, you know, the, the equivalent of emissions for, um, 20 minutes of every hour. That's, that's what those area sources represent within the model. So in terms of whether a truck is there idling, you know, the same truck is there idling 20 minutes continuously or, um, it, it moves and is replaced by another truck. It's, it's immaterial, it's, it's represented in the model. Those, those emissions are accounted for in the model.
Um, you have detailed hourly temperature records to run the model?
Yes.
Um, would it be reasonable to have a different, um, would it be reasonable to sort the hours by what fell into the permissible? You know, the, the golden window of, uh, between 40 and, um, to, to sort the hours, what, uh, and how many hours fell outside the window of, of 40 and 70 degrees and have a, and, and have longer idling for those hours?
Uh, no, and the reason why is my, my temperature data and temperature data that is measured routinely at airports that is used in this type of modeling is based using a 10-meter meteorological tower, which is quite a bit further up in the atmosphere. Um, and so that, that's why for something like that, I think you would want temperatures closer to ground level.
Which are, which exist. Um, but anyway, um, so, um, so how, how accurate would you say the air, air mod model is?
So the air mod model is designed to overpredict concentrations by about a factor of two, this sort of a, a rule of two.
Um, let me show you. No, oddly, um, that this is a, um, so you, so you're saying that, that the air mod prediction is twice as high as it actually as, as the measurement would be, is that correct?
So generally speaking, the air mod model is designed to overpredict by about a factor of two.
Um, this is a, um, this is a table from a study um, called Road Source Model Intercomparison Study Using New and Existing Data Sets. Um,
Objection.
Well, I, I would like to say.
Hold on, let, hold on, Ms. Casman, let Mr. Gallagher explain his.
We have no idea where this, uh, study is from.
We'll tell you.
You have an opportunity to put on your case, as we've already said. So there is a distinction between cross-examination and your case in chief.
Understood, Mr. Gallagher, but I think, uh, Ms. Casman, you know, we'll, we'll give her a little bit of leeway here. I think she's building up to her question, so if Mr. Sabato can't answer, that's, we can certainly, uh, understand that. But I think we can let Ms. Casman go ahead and ask the question.
Okay, so, so this study was, um, done by an international group of authors, among them, um, the EP, US EPA Office of Research and Development National Exposure Research Lab Laboratory. I will submit this article, it was published, um, in the proceedings of the 15th International Conference on Harmonization Within Atmospheric Dispersion Modeling for Backstory Purposes. Um, so they, they, this, this study was about, um, tracer analysis where highly instrumented, um, at all the receptors, um, and they compared, uh, a bunch of dispersion models and, and, and interestingly, they found a consistent negative bias in all of the models, but for the air mod run in a volume mode, the way that, that, um, that Epsilon's, um, model is run is minus, this is the, um, the fractional bias. They found that it was 30, 35, 37% by, negative bias, meaning that it under, it, um, it underpredicted the actual data. And, uh, they, they, they had two different tracer studies and the, the second one was, was, um, a negative bias of 15%. So, um, so this is in, in contradiction to, to what the, what, I guess, the, um, the, you know, the, the number that, that, um, Mr. Sabato said that it, it overpredicts by, by a factor of two. So, um, so this is very important.
Ms. Casman, I'm sorry, we've, we've given you quite a bit of leeway here, but you have to ask a question, it's cross-examination.
In light of, of the study, how confident are you that the air quality, um, will, predicted by the, um, air mod model will be below the, the NACS? Um, and can you explain your reasoning?
Sure, I, I can't speak to the study, this isn't my study. Um, however, what I can tell you is that I'm, I'm very confident in the analysis that we did. Again, um, at the results as we see them really are dominated by the assumptions that we make regarding the idling on site that, that is, um, associated with the peak impacts that we see. Um, and, and that idling has nothing to do with a volume source, it's, it's an area source in our model. The other thing I would also add is that the version of the model that are used for these studies are very important because these models are continuously improved and, um, and, and constantly being evaluated by the EPA. So it is very possible that what you're looking at is a much older version of the model that we've run, although again, I, I can't speak to this particular study, I don't have any knowledge about it. But in terms of the analysis we did, I stand by it. It's, it's, you know, to, to me, the impacts of, that we're seeing are, are really dominated by idling um, in that assumption that we made and, and really, um, that, that assumption in my professional opinion is a conservative one.
Okay, um, so, um, as, um, Sandy Fax, Fox, uh, mentioned that the, that the, um, um, national air quality, uh, ambient air quality standards are, are up for review, the five-year review process, and that, um, um, the previous, um, Science Advisory Board suggested that they be lowered, that the annual average, um, standard be lowered from, uh, PM 2.5 standard be lowered from 12 micrograms per cubic meter, uh, to a range of eight to 10 micrograms per cubic meter. So, um, the, um, your, the Epsilon analysis said that we're, um, that with the project, uh, the, um, this average ambient, uh, 2.5, PM 2.5 concentration is going to be 90% of the, of the 12 microgram uh, per cubic meter standard. Um, oh, with, but, um, it would be below the, the.
What is the question, please?
It would, it would, um, in 2022, in 2022, when we were expecting a lower standard, uh, a lowering of the standard, it would no longer, um, be.
We heard the same objection we had for the last, uh, line of questioning. He can only testify.
Ms. Casman, we did already cover this with Ms. Fox and, and agree that this, it's, it's not fair to make Mr. Sabato speculate as to if you, what a future standard may be or what other circumstances may surround that future standard. So I'm going to sustain that objection.
It wasn't exactly that, it was what would be the implication of this lowering of the standard um, towards the conclusions of Epsilon's air quality report, something he could answer.
I mean, Mr. Sabato, can you answer that question? Uh,
I mean, uh, uh, again, the standards we have in front of us, which are, you know, have, are, are standards that have gone through a process like what you've, you know, where they've done a scientific review of a number of peer-reviewed studies and come to a scientific conclusion that they proposed as a rulemaking that not only EPA, but Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and Allegheny County Health Department all have the same standard that, that this is the standard that, that really is the best one for us to use to evaluate this project at this time. I, I have no knowledge as to how that standard is going to change in the future. It could go down, it could go up as a result of that review, but this is really the, the best standard we have available to evaluate this project at this time.
Okay, so I'd like to talk about, um, construction admissions.
Ms. Casman, if I could, I, I apologize, I was so sticky, you may be wrapping up and I was gonna, I was gonna wait till you were done to, to request a stop. I promised, uh, both the core reporter and some other folks that we would be taking a little break at 9:30 or at the latest 9:45. Uh, so I'm going to ask the core reporter now, Kim, um, do you need five minutes, 10 minutes with, how much time do you need?
I, I recommend 10 minutes, please, this is.
Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, Ms. Casman, I apologize for, for cutting you off in the middle there, but we'll be, we'll shut down for 10 minutes and we'll see you all at, at 9:55.
Great.
Alex, can you let us know when, uh, council's ready in the chambers there so we can go back on the record?
Yeah, just a minute. They're, they're making their way in now.
Thanks.
All set.
Okay, great. Thanks, Alex. Um, so we'll go back on the record now. And where we left off was Ms. Casman, uh, had some questions, I believe, regarding the air quality during the construction phase of the project. Uh, before we get back to Ms. Casman, I do want to let everyone know that, um, our plan is to wrap up around 11 o'clock tonight. Uh, we'll see, you know, where we get, uh, where we are at that point and, and we can reevaluate. And we will announce that the, uh, next hearing date, uh, well, at the end of the hearing here, we'll announce that for, uh, Thursday, the 12th at 6:00 PM. Uh, so, um, we will go back to Ms. Casman now and see, see how far we can get tonight.
Okay, um, so in the, um, in the construction appendix, are PAHs and PCBs that, um, might outgas or be mobilized with dust from the contaminated soils included in the emission estimates?
Uh, they're not evaluated as part of the analysis. We didn't know.
Would, would there be a way to determine if the soil-associated organics were important?
Any, it, any of contamination that would be on the site would be done under supervision of a, of a site professional that, that would handle sort of those types of questions. That's, that's really outside of my analysis.
Okay. So, um, because the, um, construction is, is temporary, um, Epsilon quantified, um, the, um, the emissions, um, from construction, but, but not the airborne concentrations. So when char- characterizing a construction impact, is it sufficient to know the weight of pollutants generated, but not the concentration of these pollutants in the air during the two-year period?
Sure, for temporary standards, it's really, for temporary activities, it's really inappropriate to compare them to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And this is for several different reasons. One is the, to assume that a temporary activity is, is, um, happening continuously for a five-year period like the air modeling analysis would have to if, if it were to be done. Um, and then on top of that, these standards are really based over a three-year average. So now you're average, you're, now you're adding an additional layer of conservatism. So at some point it becomes difficult to assess the temporary impacts from a project like this to the standards that we have available to us, which is why generally you do not see permitting agencies require, um, construction impacts to be modeled.
Right, we're not constrained by these, uh, conventions because, um, Epsilon just chose the convention. Uh, the, the council can do anything it wants. And I, I'm wondering if, um, since the council cannot determine how bad the construction air pollution will be without the dispersion model, modeling, um, is it out of line for them to ask that that be?
Objection, this is getting argumentative.
Go ahead and finish your question, Ms. Casman.
I did. Kent, um.
Is it out of line for, I'm sorry, I must have missed the end.
Oh, for the council to ask, uh, to find, ask that the dispersion modeling on these emissions that they've already generated, uh, be performed.
When you say out of line, Ms. Casman, is, is, are you asking is it, would it, that be a reasonable request by a borough council?
Yes.
I think that's a fair question to ask, um, Mr. Gallagher, overrule.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure I'm following your question, Elizabeth. If you could maybe try, try again, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm just getting at that, that you have the ability to, um, to, to tell the council what the air quality will be for Churchill for the two years based on the emissions, um, of the, you know, the emissions inventory that you've created.
Yeah, but that would be assuming again that construction is happening continuously at that two-year rate for a five-year period, which is why I, I said before that we don't really have a standard to compare it to.
You couldn't just look at the, um, like daily, the daily statistics? Say like, in my two-year period, my daily averages at these receptors.
Yeah, this is objection, this is still the construction is irrelevant. The standard goes to the operations. He's already testified in answer to this line of questioning.
Ms. Casman, Ms. Casman, he, we, we have covered this ground already about the, the construction. Uh, Ms. Mr. Sabato testified that he did not, uh, apply his standards to the construction period and he's testified as to why that was the case. So I think continuing, uh, down this path is really not going to be fruitful.
Right, well, um, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Casman.
Thank you, Mr. Sabato.
You're welcome.
Um, Alex, who's next on the list?
So Peter Spurty's is next and after Peter, Susan Starett, Craig Yankees and, um, Robin Renka, please.
Thank you. Good, Susan, I'm sorry, uh.
Peter.
Peter, sorry.
Um, so I wanted to ask about something that Chris Prisk said in the transcript of the public hearing on July 19th, 2021. Um, so he, he was asked by Elizabeth Cadman, um, whether, um, the traffic from associated with the warehouse would be the same all year long. And he replied, no, there's a kind of normal operating capacity. And then they do have a few days and have a kind of seasonal influx. Uh, and he estimated, when asked about, um, how long that would be, he said, it is my understanding that the seasonal upticks amount to maybe 14 days. That's what I've been told. Um, is that seasonal influx part of your analysis?
So my analysis basically uses the, the transportation impact study as an input. So in terms of Chris's analysis, that's, that's, we, we use the peak hour input, which is really what, um, Chris's analysis was geared towards assessing.
But you don't know whether that include, as far as I can see, that does not include the surge.
No, so if it, he's not including the surge for that, then it would not be reflected in my analysis either.
And, uh, would, um, so we have a surge, which according to his understanding is 14 days. Uh, and he didn't say anything about how large that surge would be. So isn't it possible that that surge would affect the results that the study?
Uh, uh, again, without knowing the magnitude of the surge, I, I can't say with, with any certainty.
Okay, um, so, so it's possible then that, that, that should be included.
Is so, so let me, let me included.
If there is a surge, should it be included in the? should it be included in the, in the report?
In terms of what we're trying to assess the impact, which is getting at, on, you know, the, the, on a, on a sort of typical worst-case basis, what, what are the impacts going to be at this facility? Keep in mind, we're, we're using multiple years of weather data. We're using the worst-case hour of traffic as dictated by the traffic analysis. We're using the worst-case impacted receptor. We're using an upper bound air monitoring concentrate, air monitoring concentration. And we're assembling all of those pieces of information to get at, you know, what is an upper bound estimate of exposure? So would I expect the analysis conclusions to change? I, I don't know. If the surge is a million trucks, then perhaps the analysis would change. But again, it, you know, our, our analysis is sort of based off of the traffic study. And that, that they kind of go hand in hand.
I'm not asking if we change, I'm asking if it should be included if it exists.
It, it depends on the circumstances that surround that estimate, you know, and that's, again, without knowing any further information about it, it's, it's hard to say one way or another.
You stated that since the average temperature was around 60 degrees, we, you weren't worried about falling outside of that 40 to 75 degree interval where the, the idling was limited. When I go to the National Weather Service site, I went to the last year that they had information, daily information on, which was 2017. And there were 240 days of the year where the maximum temperature in Pittsburgh was above 75, or the minimum was below 40.
Okay.
So doesn't that mean that it's actually fairly often? As a matter of fact, you would fall outside of that range?
So I, I think you misunderstood the Allegheny Code. The Allegheny Code basically says that if you are less than 40 degrees Fahrenheit or greater than 80 degrees Fahrenheit, you're allowed to idle for up to 20 minutes in an hour. What our analysis did is it assumed, we assumed that it was like that all the time, that vehicles could idle on-site for 20 minutes of every hour for our, for all five years that we did the modeling for. So in terms of my analysis, I accounted for that happening regardless of what the ambient temperature was outside in order to make sure that I, I captured the maximum extent that a vehicle could idle by law on-site.
I'm sorry, isn't there an exception for, for air conditioning and heating? That, that is not limited to 20 minutes?
But again, it's irrelevant to my analysis, as my analysis assumes that it happens continuously regardless of the ambient temperature.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you were assuming it was limited to 20 minutes. And I'm asking, could it be more than 20 minutes, given temperatures that fall-
Objection, this is good, this is repetitive. We went through the same line of questioning.
Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to overrule that only because I, I mean, I think I'm a little confused now myself as to, as, as to the testimony, and I, hopefully, Mr. Sabato can, can clarify it, but I think the question is, well, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Sabato respond to the question, I don't want to prestate it.
Yeah, can you, can you read the question back? Because I think I'm confused about what's being asked as well, so.
I, I'm asking if it's possible to idle for more than 20 minutes if the temperature falls outside of the range 40 to 75.
In, in terms of how I understand the code to be written, the Allegheny Code is that it's limited to just 20 minutes of idling time within a specific temperature window. And all, all our analysis assumed that it could idle for 20 minutes of each hour regardless of what the ambient temperature is.
Well, let me, I have it here somewhere, but I can't find it. Okay, um, so the IPCC has released a report that says that it is inevitable that temperatures will be rising over the next 20 years. And depending on what other actions we take, they may be rising much more over the next 40 years. So given, is there anything in your report which takes into account what is an inevitable change in the weather and how that would affect pollution?
Objection, this is irrelevant.
And how is it irrelevant?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Mr. Spurty's. I mean, we, we're not going to debate the, the merits of or, or extent of scope of climate change during this cross-examination. But I think it, it, it sounds like a pretty yes or no question for Mr. Sabato, either included climate change or, or didn't in his report. I think you can answer the question.
Yeah, the impacts of climate change were not included in my analysis. Our analysis relies upon five years of hourly weather data, which is designed to sort of give, you know, a, a, you know, a series of sort of atmospheric conditions that the project could exist under. And, and five years is used because it tries to get a statistically meaningful amount in order to account for variations in the weather that occur on a regular basis.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Spurty's. Alex?
Susan Starett, please, Susan.
And I, before Susan begins, I know sometimes, Alex, you've asked me to, to mention to the folks who are attending how many participants we have. We do have right now 124 participants, of which 25 are panelists, so just letting the public know about that.
There's about a dozen on Facebook right now as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. All right, um, so I wanted to ask some questions about demolition, but they're not repetitive, they don't repeat the same points that were previously repeated. Can I proceed?
I just, before we get into this, I just want to make sure that there's a line of demarcation between people actually putting on their cases and cross-examination, because this certainly seems like we may be heading down the route of the former.
Well, I think that's, I think that's a fair point, Mr. Gallagher, so I would ask, you know, Ms. Starett to, to keep her focus on cross-examination questions rather than providing her own testimony. And to answer your question, Ms. Starett, until you ask your, until you ask your question, we can't make a determination as to whether or not, you know, there's going to be an objection or whether it will be sustained. But I think you did hear that, you know, Mr. Sabato testified on multiple occasions that he has not performed studies using the construction phase data from the project. So that's the extent you can state outside of that.
I would like, I would like to share something from his report and ask him about it, that's what I'm going to do.
That sounds fine, go ahead.
And my questions are all phrased as questions and written out ahead of time.
Thank you.
So, um, I was a little surprised that your answer, because I'm aware that, uh, the, so I, I see that you have a chart with the emissions, and I'm aware that they're only quantified, and they're not included in the NAAQs, and I understand your answer that, uh, well, I understand the objection that you're not concerned about. This is a conditional use. So my question is going to longer term than just the construction phase, okay? So what I wanted to ask you about this is, what, which equipment this includes? You, you do say that you quantify the emissions. Um, can you tell me just briefly in a few words what each of these six pieces of equipment do?
So these are taken from a representative construction site designed to sort of categorize equipment.
Okay, so this would be the equipment for knocking down and carting away things, or?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, all right, so I would like to now show you a, um, a note from the site plan. So here's, here's, I'm sorry, let me put my screen in the middle here. You can see that note, right? Now, so you saw that I gave the reference, I should read it out loud for the record, that the chart that I showed was Attachment C, and it was from Exhibit 38, and it was page 62 of the PDF. And that was the, the air quality modeling report on, that is Exhibit 38, that's what we just showed. Now, what I'm going to show now is from the general notes, it's Langen drawing CS002, and it's dated April 21st, 2021, and I'm looking at Notes 5 and 6. Um, so you talked about the, those are the emissions with that machine redo, does, and what I want to point out, so that says that in Note 6, it says not only are they going to demolish all buildings, pavement, et cetera, were indicated, but that demolish concrete and asphalt after that, after that, shall be crushed to the dimensions indicated in the project technical report and stockpiled, stockpiled for reuse as site fill. All demolition and material reuse shall be in accordance with environmental requirements for the site. But there could be stuff, uh, yeah, so the question is, could there be stuff stockpiled after the, after the construction period's over, and how would that be relevant to your report?
I'm sorry, I'm just reading the note.
Yeah, go ahead, take your time.
No, I don't think that this would be relevant, as I understand this, and as I understand the testimony from the, from prior individuals, that the, the plan is to really try to reuse as much of the fill as possible on the site. So I believe that this is really what this note is trying to get at.
Correct, they will stockpile it and use what they can. But there might be some left.
That, I mean, again, that's, that's not something that was evaluated as part of the emission estimates in, in the analysis.
Thank you, okay, um, that's sort of where I was going, thank you. Um, so I have another question about your study, and you talked about the methodology that you agreed upon. Did you discuss the methodology of your report with, who did? With, let's see, with Hillwood before you wrote the report?
So the methodology that we took was detailed out in a modeling protocol, which, you know, was reviewed by the client prior to it being, being submitted to the, the borough.
Okay, um, so did you discuss the method with Gateway?
Not with Gateway specifically, but the protocol was submitted to Gateway. My understanding is Gateway made TRC available to review that the modeling protocol and the modeling report, they generated some letters that sort of detailed their comments about the protocol and their input into the analysis. And we generated response documents back to respond to those comments or address them in the report.
Would that be before or after you wrote the report?
Well, the report's been reviewed now a few times, so there were the, there was the initial review of the modeling protocol, and we responded to that in writing to Gateway and TRC. And then there was the review of the modeling report, and we responded to that again in writing to Gateway slash TRC. And then there's the final report that was just generated last week that again contains a response to comments based off of the, the comments that they made back in April.
So, um, were you aware that the methodology for calculating the number of truck trips was a matter of discussion and negotiated between the Borough's Engineering Firm and Hillwood? I know that's input to your study, so that's how it's relevant?
So my analysis is based off of the transportation impact study, so that's the extent of, of my knowledge of, of the, you know, it's an input to my study. In terms of discussions that took place and negotiation, I, I have no knowledge of any of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so just one more question, my last one, is, um, you're an engineer who performs, or you're a scientist who performs studies to accompany these kind of permit applications. Is it, is it considered good engineering practice for the engineering firm? I mean, is this commonly done? For the engineering firm who's going to be, be performing an independent review of the study for the municipal body that'll be approving it to be negotiating the number of rate of mobile surface sources of pollutants with the engineering firm that is performing the traffic study prior to the study being conducted?
I, I think I just told you that I have no knowledge about any of that, so I, I, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks, Ms. Starett. If you could unshare or stop sharing.
There we go.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question, Alex.
Yeah, Craig Yankees, please.
Thank you. Mr. Sabato, thank you for clarifying the amount of idling time that you used in your modeling. I was also very confused about that in your original presentation. And most of my questions were directed towards the four and a half months each year that we, like you, if you're up in Maynard, rarely get above 40 degrees, and maybe even a little bit longer up there in New England, from our exist, from our 30 years of living up there. But returning back to the NAC standard for a moment, they define levels that are not supposed to be exceeded. Given that your bio on the Epsilon website includes that you also do human health risk assessments, even though the NAC standard provides levels that might be considered to be acceptable below their numbers, are you asserting that there are absolutely zero incremental health effects going from a pollutant level of zero up to the NAC standard?
So in, I am aware of that there are health studies out there that show impacts below the NACs, as, as I think you indicate, you know, in terms that there are epidemiological studies that feed into the decisions that are made to set the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. As part of that decision-making process, they consider a lot of different things, a lot of different factors that, that process is reviewed by an outside scientific body, as we've heard today, that makes recommendations. And then EPA then has to consider sort of the holistic evidence that's available to set a standard that they believe is safe. So in terms of the evaluation and my analysis, the, the numbers that I use, which are based, which are from the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, do, do represent, in my professional opinion, below, you know, below which there really is no detrimental impact.
But you did admit that below the NAC standards, you've seen epidemiological studies or studies that show that there are effects. So are you saying that nobody in Churchill will be negatively impacted by this additional pollution?
No, I'm saying that those epidemiological studies feed into the process of setting the standard by which I base my analysis on to say that there is no material detrimental impact.
Because the studies show we won't be above those thresholds, but you did agree that going from zero to those thresholds can have effects.
No, I agree that there are studies upon which the NACs are based, that, that EPA bases their decisions on, okay, in terms of setting the standard by which show that there might be health effects below that. However, EPA considers that evidence along with other evidence that show that there are health impacts that are, are not documented at that. They have to consider all of the evidence that's presented to them as part of their evaluation.
Okay, so these NAC standards represent community-wide degrees of acceptable risk. Would you agree?
These NACs about the- These NACs about, these NACs numbers represent our best understanding. Of what is considered a safe level of exposure for set, for even sensitive subpopulations and children and the elderly.
Okay, so, so then you can state in your professional opinion that nobody will be negatively impacted by the additional pollution as long as we don't exceed the NACs levels?
I, I think I stated it during my testimony earlier that my analysis documents compliance with the NACs, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. Of which the EPA, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and Allegheny County Health Department. All believe our standards by which we should be using to, to be protective of sensitive subpopulations.
No further questions.
Thanks, Ms. Yankis. Alex, moving on?
Yes, next we have Robin, please mute yourself.
Okay, sorry, it kept muting back again. Wow, that's a lot of information you've given us tonight.
So, so, sorry, I, I hope that uh people can understand that this is something that. That really there are a lot of inputs that go into it and that we really did do our best to try to make this a holistic. Assessment as possible, so I, I know I'm probably putting some people to sleep, but um, this is. This is something where that, that we, we really did try our best to, to give a holistic assessment of this project.
Well, um, your information was presented as. Understandable as possible for a layperson, and I thank you for that. Um, breathing is important, it's important to me, I know it's important to many people, so my question is, is very simple. Um, Pittsburgh and Allegheny County are, are known to have temperature inversions. Rather frequently in the summer, and I believe we had a few in the spring this year, which was a surprise. We had one on July fifth that was partly sparked. I, okay, that was a pun, but part sparked by firework particles. And that causes the, our orange alert days. And I, my concern i- is. What if we're close to one of those, would the emissions, the diesel emissions from the trucks that are? The six hundred trucks that are going to be going through the, the borough, will that push us more frequently? Up into those orange alert days where the sensitive groups should not be going outside without an N ninety-five filter on their face?
Sure, um, so in my analysis, recall, one of the reasons why we use many years, five years worth of. Weather data and that weather data comes from the Allegheny County Airport as well as, so that's the, so the surface-based measurements. That we use in our air dispersion modeling, there's also upper air and upper air is important to get at what um, the, these inversions. Um, and really, um, so there are many periods of inversions accounted for. In the air dispersion modeling that we did, um, and you know, and, and certainly not lost on me. Um, that Pittsburgh experiences, you know, the, the Pittsburgh and Mon Valley area does, does experience that, that weather pattern, it is represented for. And accounted for in our analysis.
So it's, it's in your numbers and everything then?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate that, that um, that's good to know, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thanks, Ms. Rentke, any other questions? Okay, uh, Alex, next up?
See any other hands up? So we have two people, it looks like, who would like to be promoted. I'm going to promote um Mark and Luann first and then Jill Stewart. Mark, Luann, if you can unmute yourself and speak, appreciate it.
Sorry, Doc, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Nope, now you muted yourself, we could hear you. Alex, you want to move on to Ms. Stewart and we'll see, we'll give McDonald's another chance to uh try to work out the kinks here?
Looks like they unmuted themselves, if you want to, if they want to go again to speak.
Please, McDonald, are you with us? All right, Alex, we had, let's, let's, let's keep on moving because we want to try to finish up Mr. Sabato tonight, not drag him back here at another, uh, another evening, so.
Go ahead, Jill.
Okay, hi, um, so um, I live, you know, I'm really bad at judging, but I would say. A football field maybe from the site, um, it was one of the houses that you showed on your first um, um, little slide thing. With like multiple, more than multiple green Xs on my property. And as one of those that would be affected, and so um, I, I guess I just want to ask. Um, are you saying that, you know, my home along with all those others that had like? Tons of green Xs on them are not going to be breathing polluted air?
Objection, this is, this is getting repetitive, these same questions have been asked and answered already.
Uh, overruled, I think, I think Mr. Sabato can answer the question, I mean, he, I think he's, he has, he has given this testimony, but I think for, to clarify for Ms. Stewart, I think it'd be helpful.
Sure, Jill, um, so the green crosses that you noted are. Areas where we asked the model to provide us a concentration estimate. So a- as I mentioned earlier, the, the project is, is definitely going to emit air pollution. But what my study is able to say is that the peak impacted location, which e- everywhere else would be less than this. That based, based on the standards that we used, that there would not be a detrimental impact as a result of the project.
So, um, and that's including the, the stoplight that's right there and the. Semi-trucks that are going to be backed up like right in front of my house because I'm like the second one off of the stoplight. I mean, that's including them sitting there and emitting their.
Yes.
Okay, so um, so we on Greensburg Pike with all those green Xs. Are not going to be considered collateral damage by the borough who's supposed to look after the uh health and resident, the health, health and safety of its residents?
Objection, I, this is.
Ms. Ms. Stewart, is, did you ask, you just Mr. Sabato if the borough's protecting you or?
I'm just, I'm just asking if, if these houses that are clearly the most directly impacted are. Acceptable collateral damage.
Well, Mr. Sabato just testified, just to your prior question, that, that all surrounding property, e- even the worst. Possible spot for this type of uh emissions, which would, you know, which would include on the site and, and at that border. Uh, would be below the threshold. Um, and I, I can only, I'm not testifying for him, but he's, he said it several, several times tonight, so um. Do you, do you want to rephrase your question? And I'm not sure what you're asking him.
No, I know, I, I, I don't want to rephrase it, I, I just, you know, the, all those green Xs on those, that, that line of houses. Was a little concerning and I, I, I just think that.
Yeah, so, so Jill, just to be absolutely clear, the green Xs are just where we're asking the model to provide us an, an estimate. So if I were you, I, I would actually be very concerned. If I did an analysis that, that asked it not to provide any concentrations at your house. Because that means I didn't ask the model to, to provide an estimate there. So the, the fact that, you know, I, we, we put receptors on people's homes. Was our way of making sure we implicitly accounted for the fact that someone lives there. And, and making sure that we evaluated that location to make sure that what we, that the project was not going to cause. A condition of air pollution at your house.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Stewart?
No, no, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alex, let's try to get uh Mr. McDonald again.
Yeah, if they go ahead and unmute themselves, they can speak.
Okay, ca- can you hear me this time?
We can.
Sorry about the uh technology there, so. Uh, okay, Mr. Sabato, um, did you, did you visit the site in connection with uh, with this study?
Yes, I did.
Good, uh, in a prior uh session, there was some discussion about uh using buses to uh take employees back and forth to the facility. Was that included in any way in the study?
Uh, so my understanding is that from Mr. Pris text testimony that in terms of the traffic analysis. They were only allowed minimal credit for um, uh, accounting for sort of alternative modes of transportation, so like. For people traveling by bus or by bike or walking to the site, they were only allowed to reduce. The traffic estimates traveling to and from the site by one percent.
How would you compare the air pollution of a, of a bus versus um, you know, fifteen cars?
I, I di- I did not do that evaluation, so I, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, um, so I'm trying to understand the use of averages. And so um, if I had twenty-four trucks uh in a twenty-four hour period. I'm assuming there would be a difference, but let me ask, if those twenty-four trucks went by my house all in one hour. Versus one every hour spread out. Uh, does that give me a different result in my, in my air quality?
It, it would and it could, and it depends entirely on um, the, when those trucks go by. If they're going by in the middle of the day, when there's a, a ton of atmospheric turbulence that helps to readily. Disperse those air emissions, you can end up with quite low concentrations if they're going by. Um, continuously throughout the day, um, that's, that's going to give you a different value, or if they're going by. If they pick that, the worst case hour in a day, you would get a very different result.
Okay, so then it's fair to say then, um, you could be led to a, a bad conclusion if you use a twenty-four hour average. Versus um, what might be happening in a particular hour or so if it's concentrated.
It, a- again, I think it depends on the, the air pollutant you're talking about. But um, in, in terms of the, the average, the twenty-four hour average for vehicle truck, trucks, that's not what we used.
Okay, is there a, uh, as far as the truck going in front of my house, um. What would be considered a safe zone, I'll call it, I mean, how many uh? How many feet away does that truck have to be from my house uh, for me to s- to consider it not having any impact?
I, un- unfortunately, sir, I don't know where you live, uh, what I can tell you.
No, just that, just any example, it's, it's not me specifically, but just in general.
Yeah, so, uh, in terms of our analysis, we did not assume a safe zone around any of these. Where, where the trucks would be traveling, so we, we estimate the concentrations adjacent to where the trucks are, are traveling.
I- is there an area, I mean, can you comment on that and a, and a particular number of feet that you would consider, uh, you would get more comfortable of no impact?
I don't understand the question.
Well, um, if the truck was one foot away from my house, of course, uh, that has a high, that would have an impact. How many feet away from my house, uh, and your professional opinion, does that track, truck have to get away from my house before it has, until it has no impact?
So in terms of our analysis, what we did is we assumed receptors located adjacent to, to roadways, right next to the roadway, so. We, we did not assume any kind of a buffer zone in documenting that, that the levels that the model, the model predicted would be, would be safe.
Okay, so um, back to the use of averages. Uh, I, I think we're going to try to set the record for the number of times we talk about forty degrees and seventy-five degrees and twenty-minute idling. I, I, I've heard conflicting things tonight, and let me throw out my understanding, because I think I've heard two different things. Here's what I uh, think I heard at the beginning of the session, that there is a general law. PA law that limits a truck idling time to twenty minutes. But then what I also thought I heard was, there's a, one of the exceptions to that law. Is if the temperature is below forty or above seventy-five degrees, that's an exception to that twenty-minute limit. And therefore, outside of that temperature zone, the, the, the truck uh is not subject to that twenty-minute limit.
No, my understanding of what the Allegheny code with respect to idling is, is. That between the temperatures of forty degrees Fahrenheit and eighty degrees Fahrenheit. A vehicle is limited to five minutes of idling in any hour. Outside for, below forty degrees Fahrenheit and greater than eighty gr- eighty degrees Fahrenheit. A vehicle may idle up to twenty minutes in an hour. And my analysis, the analysis we did, accounts for vehicles idling for twenty minutes on site.
Okay, so I understand that, I, I think that's a, a. Not what, not from you, but that's not what was said at the beginning of the session, so there, there in conflict, we'll cer- certainly straighten that out. So on page nine, I think it was of what you presented tonight. Um, you know, the, the, the PM two point five, it shows a ninety percent of standard. Um, is that, you know, within the site, is that a, a, an average within the site, or is that a particular point?
Sure, that's, that's the peak impacted location.
Um, and P, of a particular spot within the location or an average, I mean.
So the, the model predicts at various receptors. And what that value represents, the zero point seven two micrograms per meter cubed. That value represents the location within the model that that zero point seven two occurs.
The location within the model, so maybe said a different way. Um, can you, you mentioned, I think somebody asked before, maybe a similar question, was where, where the most uh? Maybe where that was, where the most sensitive area was, and I think you said south of the site. Um, I'm not certain where that is, can we, can we show, can you show on a map where you consider to be the, the most. Sensitive area of the site?
Sure, let me see if I can pull that up. Let's see. So this is looking at PM two point five.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for PM two point five, in, this is the latest air quality modeling report. Um, you'll notice it highlighted in red where the peak impact is, so in this case. It's on the northern portion of the property, zero point seven two is the peak impact. If we look at NO two, you'll see right here where my cursor is, is a. I can't quite make out the value, but it's highlighted in red. Um, right at that location is the peak um, impact for one hour NO two.
Okay, and that, that's part of your August second updated study?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, did you do any uh, what I would call sensitivity analysis as part of the study?
In respect to oh, why is my hand raised? In in what respect?
Well, in my world, a sensitivity analysis would be of course, as you've mentioned, the report has a lot of data, a lot of assumptions, a lot of judgments or whatnot. You know, which assumptions and their assumptions and estimates, you do a sensitivity analysis to say, well, if this particular assumption was, you know, if we increased it or decreased it or whatnot, how does it affect this the study? And then you ferret out which what are the most sensitive and important assumptions that would affect the study?
Sure, I I think I spoke a little bit to some of that that we had done, and that's one of the ways that we had determined that the idling and the assumption around the twenty minutes for idling was really a a key factor in our analysis. There have been other assessments we've done where we use a much lower number, quite frankly, we use we use five minutes because that's consistent with the law of of that municipality or that area that we're we're involved with. So to to me, using twenty minutes for idling is like over the top already. And I'm honestly so so sort of shocked that people are implying I didn't use long enough because for me, most of the time, five five minutes is is what what we used.
Well, I I think again, on that point, I think there's not a clear understanding of what the what those rules are, so. But I understand as you explain them now, if that's the case, it it all it that makes sense. And I'll also bring up the the a prior point, but in a different way. You know, so on the ninety percent, we've got two in the page nine at ninety percent and eighty-five percent of the standard. And we talked about the potential for the future of lowering standards. I'm not going to ask that question. But is it fair to say, though, that in those particular data points, we don't have a lot of cushion, we don't have a lot of room for error, if you will. If they do get lowered, I'm not asking for speculation, but I'm just asking to make sure I understand when I look at those two, there's not a lot of room if they do get lowered.
So in terms of when I look at the analysis, I really do consider the impacts from the the this particular development to be, you know, on on the 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 trivial end of the air emissions. And I say that because when you look at the table that I shared earlier, that the background value really represents the vast majority of the air pollution. And as part of lowering a standard, what has to happen is that basically Allegheny County Health Department has to document how they would attain that standard. And so a plan would be developed and measures would be taken to lower the background air quality such that that background air quality value comes back down into attainment, should should the standard get lower? So so to me, whether this project is built or not, even if the standard happened to be lowered, you know, say to ten, there would still need to be a plan developed that would document how the what measures Allegheny County would implement to decrease the air quality impact such that it would be acceptable.
Okay. And that assumes, as I've mentioned, the the study has a lot of data, a lot of assumptions, judgments or whatnot. And you've mentioned several times that you're using the data from the traffic study. And it would not be normal for you to do any due diligence on the traffic study, right? If you've it's reasonable for you to rely on that.
It yes, and the reason why I feel comfortable relying on it is because there are a number of sets of eyes that have looked at and, you know, at the traffic study. So in terms of me as a meteorologist questioning the impact of a traffic study when you have, you know, the traffic consultant who specializes in the net area, the boroughs consultant who is an expert in that area, the Pendot, Allegheny County, all reviewing that. I I I don't have the expertise to be able to add much meaningful insight into the traffic analysis. So it is it is an assumption and in an input to the study that that I I feel like has a lot of eyes on it and a lot of people looking at it.
That's fair, but 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 if by chance this traffic study was using bad information or bad assumptions, if you will, I mean, these
irrelevant, he's testified ad nauseam to the traffic study. He can't he can't answer this question, these questions anymore.
Mr. McDonald, are you are you asking him if 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 the traffic study was had incorrect information, would that impact his study?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
I mean, I think that's a fair question. I think I know the answer, but go ahead. I'm going to overrule the objection.
It's with without knowing the extent of the the error in the supposed the supposed error in the traffic study, I can't tell you one way or another if it would impact the conclusions of the air quality study.
But if there's a material error, it could have a material effect on your study. So I understand that. You you don't know the extent of the error. Okay. So on driveway B, the exit going out onto Greensburg Pike. That was discussed a little bit before, and you you referenced an idling assumption that I'm not sure I heard, or maybe you didn't get into detail, that you had a certain idling assumption, there's going to be a new light there. What's the idling assumption we're making there?
So it has to deal with the delay that you see in attachments on page fifty-eight of the report. And so once you put a light in a signalized light, there is a delay that's associated with that, and that is that is what that 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 is one of the factors that go into the emission rate at that location.
So how do we factor in? So that's one truck. And there's so many trucks in this facility, there's going to be another truck right behind it and another truck right behind that.
Yep.
How does how does that get factored in?
It it gets factored in in terms of the the number of trucks that visit that intersection per hour and the delay that each of those trucks would experience at that intersection each time it encounters that intersection.
And again, we're using the traffic study for that data, right?
Yes, sir.
So the traffic study assumes, I think, that approximately half of the trucks are exiting on that ramp. I think that can easily be a a a bad assumption, not by any, you know, ill intent, but I believe eighteen-wheelers going east are not going to go out exit A because they've got to navigate a left-hand turn and a hard right. It's going to be much easier for them to use driveway B, make the right, make the rights, make the right onto Penn and go straight onto the parkway. So that's an example where that truck traffic would double going out to that exit ramp using a different assumption than the traffic study is using.
Mr. McDonald, did you have a question there? We we do. We do need to stick to questions. It's good. It's good. We want to keep Mr. Sabato rolling.
That's fair. I just want to illustrate the prior traffic study error, the effect it could have. It could double the traffic out there. So the other area of concern is the entrance ramp going westbound on the parkway. Similar question, but I think those those eighteen-wheelers trucks, I I can't imagine too many of them currently using that entrance ramp. You know, how many of them are coming down Penn? They're going to have a heck of a time pulling out in the parkway. Particularly if they have to come to a stop. I don't know how they're going to even go out. They're going to back up and there's going to be
Mr. McDonald, we're we're going to sustain sustain the objection. We we did just talk about this. You you can't, I mean, throwing out traffic scenarios to someone who already told you they relied on the submitted traffic study. I don't think this is the right witness for you. Then you need to focus on questions regarding air quality of this particular witness.
That that's fair. So there's there's two areas of concern there we'll we'll hit later. Did you factor in any growth into your study?
And growth in what way?
Growth in the facility where the activity would increase.
No.
Okay. Can you? I don't. I hate to ask you to pull this back up, but you referenced Exhibit Fifty. Can you pull your your August second study back up again?
I can try. I have so many open now. It's
Mr. McDonald, while he's pulling that up, can you direct us to a specific portion of that study that you're going to be looking for?
Yeah, I'd like to go to Attachment B. I I think it's the fifty-eighth page of the PDF. I think it's the sixth page within Attachment B. If somebody else can pull it up, that would be wonderful.
All right, I'm there. What'd you say, the fifty eighth page?
I think it's the fifty-eighth page.
This one.
There we go. You want to enlarge out a little bit?
I will try.
That's perfect. All right. So I wanted to make sure I understood this. So the projected traffic volume on both of those columns is again from the traffic study. So on driveway site A, line number two, we see four hundred and twenty projected traffic volume going in and out in the PM, and we see three hundred and ten in the morning, right?
Yes.
And that's just all input from the traffic study.
Yes, sir.
Can you go to page fifty-three then? The three-ten and the four-twenty? The numbers we want to remember, page fifty-three.
Okay, Site Driveway B?
Yeah, so Site Driveway B and the far right-hand column there, there's our four hundred and twenty. Now, these should all be the same numbers, right? It's four hundred and twenty, but that three-ten now says two hundred and seventy-two in that column. Is that is that an error?
Well, that's Site Driveway A.
Right. Let's let's go back to that page fifty-eight, Site Driveway A, in the morning.
You know, you know what it is, is that these are the intersections. And what we're looking at there is the volume going through a a certain link. So these are not going to be identical because these are these are based off of the stick drawings within the the traffic impact study.
Well, I'm not sure every other, if you go to page fifty-eight, every other one of those numbers in that column does agree to page fifty-three. So I'm not sure that explanation is correct.
Okay.
So do we think that is an error?
I I don't know. I'd have to look at it more.
Okay. Who who hired your firm to do the study?
Lang Langdon Engineering.
Okay, so they're your customer. Now, they're they're paying your bill, of course. Correct?
Yes, sir.
You you mentioned before you were asked how many previous studies you had done. I think there were a couple Amazon and 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 several other ones. How many of those studies, you know, reached the conclusion that that stopped or prevented the development?
That stopped or prevented the development?
Yes.
Yeah, so the way these types of studies are done is you do the analysis. If the analysis shows an issue, then you identify mitigation opportunities so that there isn't an issue.
Is it ever possible not to be able to mitigate it?
It is possible. Yep.
But that's but of all your studies, that's never happened.
No, that's not true. We have done some studies for much larger sources of air pollution where we showed that, quite frankly, without adding expensive control technology, which they ultimately did do, that they they actually couldn't meet the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And so what we then did is we worked with them to establish, you know, controls and and limits that they could meet in order to ensure that they wouldn't violate the standard.
And the development went forward then in that case?
They ultimately end up, this was an existing facility, so they ultimately ended up installing the air pollution control technology, and it's a coal-fired power plant, so you can guess how that ended. They're now no longer operating.
I mean, is it, you know, Langin is your customer. How many jobs do you guys do for Langin? Is this your first or they?
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to sustain that objection. We really need to stick to the to relevant questions for this witness.
This is relevant. This is showing by.
I sustain the objection. You need to move on to your next question.
Okay. Is it your job to generally support the desired result of your customer? Are you an advocate for your customer?
In in what way? In terms of our analysis, we take the traffic impact study and we put it into an air quality modeling analysis that was reviewed by a third-party consultant to ensure that the approach we had taken was one that that they could support. And in doing that, we then executed that modeling analysis and and reported the results. There isn't to me, it's it's an objective analysis.
But if you didn't reach the desired result, you're probably
Objection. He answered the question.
Mr. McDonald, this is getting argumentative. If you need, if you have questions for this witness regarding air quality, you're you're welcome to ask them. We can stick around for that, but we need to stay on task here.
All right, I I'm just trying to hit the bias point that the study is promoted as being independent, and it really isn't independent.
And you'll be you'll have your opportunity to put on your case, Mr. McDonald, at the appropriate time, but this is cross-examination.
That's fair, and that's my last question.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Alex, do we have any other party objectors who have requested an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Sabato?
Alex? We've called in this evening, and whether or not we allow those people to call, I can read off the phone number. And if they want to mute themselves, they can speak. So I will work with that just to make sure those individuals weren't looking to speak tonight.
Well, do we have, I think we know Ms. Klein. Do we have any other party objectors besides Ms. Klein who who have been calling in on the phone?
No.
So maybe we could just check. Do we do we have her number handy? Maybe we could just check with her.
She's not texted me tonight whether she was going to speak. Let me check my texts. It's been a while.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Just want to make sure that when we're done, we're done here. And then we'll obviously give an opportunity if there is redirect from Mr. Gallagher or Mr. Metz. They're certainly welcome to keep Mr. Sabato on the hot spot if they if they so choose.
I don't have a text from April tonight, and she she just texted me. I'm she's faithful, eleven oh seven PM. I'm not speaking.
There we go. Appreciate that. Okay, so that will conclude the cross-examination then. Mr. Metz, Mr. Gallagher, do you have any redirect for Mr. Sabato?
No, we don't.
Okay, great. Well.
Hey Gavin, how about Borough Council?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt. Yeah, absolutely.
Councilman Matt Castilla, a quick question is on some of your charts there. I think it was on your slide number ten. I don't know if you can pull that up?
Yep. Oh, boy. There we go. All right, I'm there.
Excellent. Would it be possible for you to provide this chart? You know, I think it's a little confusing trying to to read everything with the different levels of scientific notation, you know, some are negative four, negative three. Could we get that chart provided to Borough Council and, you know, the residents, I guess? Where where everything's either the same scientific notation like oh-three or oh-four or where it's all just with the decimal points so we can kind of compare easier?
Sure.
Okay, and then I think slide eleven, same kind of question, just, you know, to make it a little easier to understand where we're comparing the, you know, kind of I think that's the allowable versus, you know, or acceptable, like the calculated the actual impact versus the acceptable.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, the other question I had is then, one of your other slides, I didn't write it down, I apologize, but you you put that it was the worst-case allowable idling was used. Can you describe what that means? I I think we've covered it, but I'm Can you describe what that means? I I I think we've covered it, but I'm just wanna touch on that to make sure I'm fully
Sure, but basically, my analysis assumes that each vehicle that travels onto the site idles for twenty minutes.
Of every hour, correct?
Of every hour, yep.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Anything else from council members? Going once. Okay, uh, sounds like that's all for Mr. Sabato. Still no redirect uh?
Nope.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so that will be it for Mr. Sabato. Uh, we we still are trying to map out, uh, finalize the the rest of the uh hearing schedule here, but we do know that uh, we're planning to uh get together again on Thursday at six PM. Uh, Mr. Mets, Mr. Gallagher, do you have additional witnesses at this time? You're presenting as part of your, you'll be presenting as part of your case in chief?
No, uh, we're finishing our case in chief. Uh, that was our last witness, and we then are all of our move all of our exhibits, one through sixty, into the record at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so with that said, uh, I know, do we have Mr. Ferguson with us still?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Ferguson. So um, am I correct in that your your preference would be to allow the individual party objectors to put their cases on starting on Thursday and then uh due to your witness, your your witnesses' availability, your your preference would be to put your case on on August twenty-sixth?
That's right.
Okay, uh, I mean, I I that that makes sense to me, the the council members, uh, Mr. Mr. Dwarren, do you have any any comments on that?
That that should be fine with us. No objection.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Metz, do you see any issue with that? It's the way that that would play out, the way I'm I'm sort of envisioning it here would be, you know, we'd have six to whenever on Thursday night for party objectors to put on their cases, you know, provide their own testimony. If they have witnesses, they could put on those witnesses. That could then carry over to another available date, I believe, which we have for uh August twenty-fourth. And the hope would be we'd start then also at six o'clock. And uh, and then hopefully be able to wrap that up on the twenty-fourth. Move on to Mr. Ferguson uh on the twenty-sixth. Mr. Ferguson, do you think you'd be able to get your case in 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 one evening? Um, I think that's possible?
Yes.
Okay, great. So ideally, then, uh, we would have Mr. Ferguson, uh, have his witnesses run through uh on the twenty-sixth. And then there would be an opportunity for both rebuttal, and I believe uh we had announced there'd be some sort of report from the Borough Engineer. Uh, I guess we'll have to find a date that has not yet been identified yet um in September. And then the, I think the last piece to this puzzle would be a period, uh, possibly multiple nights uh for members of the public who are not party objectors to uh provide testimony in support of their uh their respective position, either for or against the application that's pending. Um, so without that said, just wanted to confirm that we are uh announcing that we will recess tonight. Uh, we will be uh reconvening at six PM, same Zoom time, same same Zoom channel um on the uh on the twelfth, six PM. Uh, we'll see you all then. Any other host items?
Yeah, I had one question. So we're fine with the the way you just laid that out, but I mean, is there gonna be an order for the objectors?
Uh, that's a great, that's a great question. Um, I, you know, I'm I'm fine with, let me, let me ask Alex, you know, we we could certainly do alphabetically, uh, would be a a fair and uh, you know, sort of random way to to select them, but Alex, did you have any thoughts or or anyone on council?
The one thing we wanted to make sure that we had was the the report of the tree committee. I know that that is something council is very interested in hearing. I think it's fair enough to go alphabetical order.
Yeah, I mean, I I was thinking the tree committee um would be along the same, in the same timeframe as the as the the en- the engineers' reports. Uh, so that would be, you know, probably provided right before the public comment. So I think these would be the party objectors cases. And if if there no one has a has a better idea, I'd be fine with just going by uh alphabetical order. And Alex, could we uh, to give these folks as much time as possible, could we maybe tomorrow morning post uh alphabetically the names of the party objectors? And again, these would be folks who are not represented by Mr. Ferguson, but but are are representing themselves as party objectors. And those folks represented by Mr. Ferguson would be part of his case, uh, you know, on August twenty-sixth, tentatively.
I can have that ready by tomorrow morning.
That would be great. Thanks. Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Gallagher. So we give uh folks a a little bit of a heads up as to when they may be going. I mean, we we've seen how some of these uh, you know, some of the testimony has been, um, some of it's, you know, quick and and straightforward, some of it uh takes longer. So, you know, we can make no guarantees at this point, but I think that's that's a good game plan going forward. Um, so anything else we need to cover before we adjourn for tonight? Great, fantastic. Thanks, everybody, for your patience and continued cooperation, and we'll see you Thursday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.